Will's ordered a new clock.
Yep.
Sorry, can't see that. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we start, I'd like to talk about a couple of side things. I guess any time is as good as any. Do you guys want to have a little chat about the possible mandate stuff with the masks? And viruses, vaccines and that? If not, we can... As I understand this, the school wants to marry with us and do this?
I had a request from the board president that, you know, assuming that the school felt the same way, I know he personally does, they had talked about doing a joint resolution. I know you and I spoke and I understand the importance of keeping that separated.
Was there...
You and Dave and...
Yeah, so David and I had talked and I was in support of doing something joint or whatever. Is that off the table now?
Well, the concern was...
We're just talking about...
I remember back in the referendum, I kept, we weren't even in the council yet, it was still our election year. I was getting calls about the referendum and trying to remind everyone that we're separate. Nothing to do with the schools.
Ah, I follow.
The schools have nothing to do with the town in terms of...
So, all right, well, with that being said, I'm 100% on board with that. I have no issues.
You guys down there have any thoughts about...
What did Greg just say? What did you say, Greg?
He has no issues with it. He just supports it.
I'd like to take credit for this resolution, but I did pledge, or I cut and paste a little bit.
Wikipedia?
We know what you mean, Mark.
From a community in Washington, the state of Washington. I looked at several and I took this one and it looked the best and I just moved a few things.
I like, and I can give a little bit of background, I think, and I won't speak for Greg, but on why I think it's important. I think it's well worded and, you know, it's obviously non-binding. We have no authority if the state comes in and says something. But in my not-so-humble opinion, I think, you know, as small communities go, so goes the country. I mean, we really are the backbone of the country, all these communities across Indiana and the United States. And I have maybe done a little more, been a little more involved in the back and forth on this, maybe than others have, probably to a detriment. And I see, what I see is a, in my opinion, a lack of leadership across the board from school boards. And so far, you know, Danville has a really great school board, so, but there are school boards in our county that are, in my opinion, you know, not really looking at everything. And I just think it, I think that it's a terrible slippery slope when we start requiring people, if a government entity, which the school is as well, and as are we, starts requiring people to make certain health choices, that becomes very dangerous and it's... So, in my opinion, it would be good to have, you know, to make a statement that supports the freedom and the rights of our citizens and not to be discriminated against because that is happening in schools. They are segregating students now. And I'm reading some of the horror stories from parents in Avon. They're now under a mask mandate and what they're requiring their small children to do within the classroom is, it's abhorrent and I would not be a very happy father. And so, I think it just, from my opinion, looking at, trying to insert some common sense and some decency and referring back to what makes our country great, and that's the ability to have freedom and liberty. And when it comes to matters of health, I think that should be between the doctor and the individual and then they make a decision that way. For what it's worth, Kingsway Christian School has a, in my opinion, the perfect approach to it. They say as much, they say, "We believe that those decisions should be between you and your doctor." And they respect the decisions that each side makes, mask or no mask, vaccine or no vaccine. So, I just think it's important as a government entity to say, because there are government entities in our country, New York being one of them, that want to tell you how to, you know, how to live your life essentially. So, anyway.
This morning, Delta Airlines announced that they were going to charge non-vaccinated individuals $200 a month for additional on healthcare costs. You know, you talk about segregation, you know, you talk about things that are wrong in America. And then a woke corporation goes and does something like that, it's sickening. So, my point that I made the other night, I'll make it again, is that masks and/or vaccinations should not be a contributing factor to either being employed or receiving employment from the town of Danville. It is a personal choice. If a department or individual feels that that is in their best interest to, whether it be vaccinated or wear a mask, completely up to them. But it will not be mandatory as a condition of employment, period.
And I have a question just along these lines. We have an employee that was just, that just tested positive. Are we going to look at opening back up where they don't have to use their sick leave or vacation leave? Because just with the numbers increasing, I didn't know if we were going to revisit that policy or if the employees were to use their own time off.
Jenny, when we addressed that last time, didn't that go through the end of this year?
Does it, does it, Mark? I can't remember.
What was...
The federal government set the dates on that, we didn't, I don't believe.
Oh.
And in the federal, it's my understanding the federal government has expired. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So, can we, can the council individually do something?
As I understand it, I mean, our attorney's not here tonight, but the benefits are yours to divvy out. And you establish by resolution, sick time, you establish vacation time, you've established seniority days. If you want to establish COVID days, I believe that you're right as an employer. I mean, you get to pick, just like when we've talked about the national holidays, you pick the dates that we have as holidays. There, I mean, if at some point the council wanted to recognize National Potato Day, I'm all for it personally, but you guys can't. It is something that you can recognize because you established the resolution that identifies those days.
And when we're on this, while we're on the holiday subject, I'm going to ask for a work study sometime in October. Several cities and towns have gone to June, what's it called, Jun, Jun, Junas?
Juneteenth.
Juneteenth, thank you. And they have also gone to, what's the October holiday? Patriot's Day, September 11th. So, as I've been asking from other cities and towns in the state to compare holiday resolutions, several have gone to adding those two holidays. So, if you guys could just be thinking, I'll present in a work study in October. If you guys would like to add those two holidays, I mean, we're already incredibly generous with holidays as it is, but if you guys would like to add those two, we can discuss it in a work study.
We've scheduled work studies, obviously, for the remainder of this calendar year. And of course, once the budget's done, we'll have plenty to discuss those things if the council wishes.
Maybe we ought to celebrate workdays and see how many workdays we can get. I'm just...
Let's not get carried away.
Pretty soon we'll have no workdays. No, I don't feel, I don't have a problem with that, but anyways.
On being out for COVID, how would a normal, how would a normal illness be handled?
You would have to use your sick time.
And they, they're only using excessive days with COVID because the health department said you can't come back to work after a certain time.
Exactly. And it's not only...
That's another topic, I guess.
Exactly.
And is there short-term disability available?
There is. We have short, we have short and long-term disability.
And what does, and every employee has that?
Every employee has short-term disability.
And what, what's deemed short-term for, I mean, two days, three days? Does it have to be a certain amount of time?
You have to use all of your time that is allotted to you.
Including vacation, right?
Exactly. And the other thing that, you know, you run into to touch on exactly what David said is if my daughter tests positive for COVID, then I have to quarantine. And, you know, then you're using your time and, I mean, we're, we're very giving with our time off. I just, we had passed the policy ourselves that we were paying COVID time and they did not have to use their own personal time. That expired, the federal has expired. So, I just wanted to throw it out since we are starting to see cases again. If we wanted to revisit that policy or if you just wanted them to...
Another option would be to explore the use of our sick bank.
Yes.
We have a lot of time in our sick bank. I'm sure that nobody is utilized. I don't remember the last time. I contribute every year to it, so...
Yeah, that is, that's a good idea.
We can...
All right, let's get back onto our original...
Yeah, we'll get on track.
What's a sick bank?
If you have unused sick time, you can contribute to the sick bank. What is it up to, 10 days, I think, your maximum contribution?
January 1st of every year, employees can elect to contribute to the sick bank. What you have to do is give up one of your sick days and then if you have exhausted all of your sick time available and you've had surgery or just things out of the ordinary happen to you, then you go before our employee advisory committee, Brenda and I, and you request, and that department head, you request to utilize the sick bank. So, we do have lots of avenues to where employees will get paid for their time off. But they do have to contribute to the sick bank. We had an employee last year who requested and they didn't contribute their one day, so we had to deny it. So, you do have to enroll in it.
So, so, as a, I guess what I'm understanding is as a, as a, this is like an umbrella that as long as somebody is participating into it, that, so, like, Mark, if you contribute to it, that day's not designated just for you, that day could be designated for somebody else.
Exactly.
I did not know we even had that. Anybody else up here knew that that was going on?
No, I had no idea.
That's interesting. I said, I like it. I'm glad you're doing it. I mean, it's just, that's creative. I like it.
And as I'm suggesting, I know we have a maximum that they can use out of the sick bank and, and I don't know what's currently in the sick bank, obviously, but I'm just wondering if we could deviate on our sick bank policy and allow them to use days out of that.
I think that, maybe I'm just speaking for myself, but I guess I'd like to know how many days are in the sick bank, what that is. And then I think that as, I think we should discuss it further at another work study, but then maybe there's something that we would be able to do as a council to backstop that sick bank, should that get exhausted.
Where the company that I worked prior to coming here, we had a sick bank and then we also had where I could gift my sick time to someone else. We had an employee that was diagnosed with cancer and she was off for, you know, 20 weeks. So, that's something else we can look at, adding to our policies in 2022.
Is it possible for somebody who has accumulated a large amount of comp time to donate that comp time back to the sick bank?
We would have to update our policies to say that, but I mean, we, you know, it's like Mark said, you guys can word it however you want. And Mark and I and Taflaw and my office are in the process of updating our policy handbook. We're working with each department head. Our, our goal was to have it done in 2020 and now, you know, with COVID and everything, we've run into some snags and, you know, there's lots of legalities to updating a policy handbook, but we are in the process of doing that.
So, every, every employee possibly has a slightly different wage. So, how is that accounted for in the sick bank?
It just kind of, the low and the high kind of average out.
And sick time's not based on financial, it's based on hours.
Oh, okay.
If we could stay on one subject and then pick up that list. Let's get back to what we were talking about before. I think I had a couple more people...
What were we talking about before?
COVID pay.
You were trying to decide if you'd like to have me bring this resolution to you at the next council meeting.
And if you could wait till the end of stuff, it would be really good. Thank you.
Yes, please bring that resolution.
Masks.
Well, first, I wasn't a big fan, but now that I read it, the wording is so good that I feel like I can get behind this because this is really, even if we stand up as a town, what are we doing?
Chris? The only problem I have is connecting us with the school.
That's fine. I said we just dropped that.
Yeah, if you drop that, let them do their thing. They're closer to the teachers and we, I mean, I don't have any children there, so I don't know anything about that.
I'll call Cory and talk to him about it.
Okay. So, basically, as a town, I think we should bring it up at the next meeting for a vote.
On the agenda for the next meeting? I did send this to legal counsel. They did not, they didn't respond, so I'm assuming he has no heartache on it?
Okay, we're done with that. Next, next thing would be the Christmas party. And does anybody have any thoughts about where we're having it?
Well, I didn't want to be a party pooper the last time, but, and this, mostly because it's more of a personal preference. I wasn't huge on it being a smoke, smoke-smelling bar, but...
So, I'm just a council member.
To add to that, it will be closed just for a private party. There will be no smoking that day. They've installed these giant smoke eaters in there and it should help. It circulates the air every so many minutes and it does a really good job of clearing it out. But, I mean, that's, that's totally up to you guys. I mean, we have thought of those type of things and I personally reached out to the restaurants in Danville just because I would like to keep it in Danville, give our business to Danville. Kickstand Bar and Grill, other than having it at the fairgrounds or the Fiedels, is the only place that can hold us because we average around 140 people at the Town of Danville Holiday Luncheon. So, if, I'm open, I mean, the committees open...
Seems like that would be a pretty tight space too, then, for 140.
You guys have any comments about it?
I'm just not sure how it would look for all the Danville town employees to be at the kickstand. Just, yeah, the optics of it, it just...
What, like the fairgrounds or something? Something more neutral?
Right.
So, what I feel, even though all the bases are covered, the place is closed, it's a bar and people sometimes look at things superficially. We have police and fire in there and they could just, people could just say, oh, they're in a bar doing that and they're supposed to be working. You don't have time to go and explain to them everything. And so, they look at things pretty superficially. I would say as a professional town, something like, I mean, we had it at Fiedels, that was okay. And we had a real good one over at the fairgrounds. And the fairground seems to be pretty much a town thing. So, we're not making a decision tonight, I just want everybody to think about it when it comes up.
We need to make a decision because places are booking up, including the fairgrounds. So, a decision's going to have to be made Wednesday night. I've already, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
We've formed a committee and Kelly D. Benedetto's on the committee as, to help assist as the chamber director. We've already met with the kickstands. So, if we're going to go in a different direction, I'm going to need to know because I've, I've spent a great deal of time on this and places are booking up.
What can I do here? Consensus? Can I have a consensus?
Well, we can wait till Wednesday night. I just...
Yeah, let's just talk Wednesday night.
Yeah, I'm just, you guys need to decide Wednesday night, a week from tonight, what we're doing.
Okay, well, we'll let this go to Wednesday night and have a chat about that.
Okay, if I, if I may just ask a couple of quick questions. So, we're, was there any issue with Fiedels or the fairgrounds from, in the past?
The Fiedels, the negative that I heard was parking. The fairgrounds, the employees, there wasn't as much to do. Like, they're used to the Fiedels where there's pool tables, there's dartboards. There was a lot of activities that the employees participated in at the Fiedels where kickstand offers all of those things. And so, those are the only two negative things. And if any department heads want to chime in...
I think you'd have a parking issue at kickstand, too.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we were going to park here at the town hall. Mark and I and the other people on the committee, we were, as long as there's not 10 feet of snow, we were going to park here and walk down because we have the lots here.
Have a parking thing with the kickstand, but with that in mind, the fairgrounds would be excellent. They have lots of parking. All right, Wednesday, we'll, we'll have a chat. Anything else before we start the budget?
I think Greg has a couple more things.
Go ahead. I may, Mr. President. So, is it possible, because I like the idea of getting other businesses and stuff like that involved, is there a possibility for the kickstand to do catering at one of those other venues? Thank you.
Good idea.
Anything else? Okay, the budget. Jenny?
So, before you is the agenda for this evening. Each department head will be presenting their budget.
Okay, so it doesn't drag a few department heads who are next, trying to get on the ready? Morning, or good afternoon, Robbie?
Good evening.
Good after, good evening, okay.
Jenny, where do you want to start with this?
It's your show.
The budget items. Jenny, I'm not for sure. Did, did we get the 10% that was cut last year? Did that go back into the budget?
Yes, it doesn't show it in these figures, so that will be a council decision.
10% will be put back in those figures.
If you guys...
If we decide, I guess, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so that's the only thing I'm requesting on the line items, that 10% be put back into the budget from the cutting of the budget. On the, the general for personnel, the data entry clerk, I'd like to move her from part-time to full-time. And the figures are shown for $39,000 and that would be plus benefits. And so, in talking to Judy White, center township trustee, she indicated that she felt that she could fund that position. The two additional paramedics, firefighter paramedics, and in talking with Judy at this time, she feels that she cannot fund 50% of that. So, any requests for additional personnel other than the data entry clerk would have to be 100% from the town. I'm requesting part-time line items be increased. The part-time firefighter EMT is $13 an hour. I'm requesting that to be $15. The part-time firefighter paramedic is $15 an hour. I'm requesting that to be 18. And I'm looking at a new program for the fire department, would be civilian paramedics only, part-time, where they would not be classified as a firefighter, they would just be classified as a civilian paramedic. And then eventually down the road, I would like to move, looking at that from part-time civilian paramedics to moving that to full-time civilian paramedics.
Civilian paramedics would be cheaper?
Yes.
What about their training?
Their training would not be the same. Their training would be the same as a paramedic, but they just would not have firefighter training. So, currently, right now, we have firefighter paramedics on the, on the medic truck. So, they're cross-trained. So, if we have a fire, they have certain assignments that they would go in as a firefighter paramedic on that fire run. And, and then if it was a civilian paramedic, they would not enter that house as a firefighter. They would stand outside and wait for any injuries to occur and rehab.
Chief Roberts, does anybody in here or you know when Judy's term expires?
She's up for reelection next year.
Her term expires December 31st of 2022.
And it's my understanding that she's not running again, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I guess just one thing that we have to keep in mind, if there, you know, will the new trustee still agree with some of these things that she's now agreeing to, or on the flip side, disagreeing to? And if, if there's a possibility of a new trustee coming in and maybe taking a different approach with how much help, assistance they give to the town of Danville, I guess that's just something we have to keep in mind. Obviously, it won't affect this year, but just kind of throw that out there. So...
You know, I know the, it's time that we look at either a fire district or a fire territory. And I would like to have those talks and start those talks and between the township and the town. And Jenny Taflaw, I don't know her name, whoever.
We're working with Baker Tilly. Paige Sanson is an expert in state on fire territory. I'm trying to get a meeting scheduled September. I'm waiting for a few people to get back with me on dates they have available. But we are looking at seeing what we can do to develop a fire territory. I'd like in September for the internal staff to meet with Paige and representative from Baker Tilly and then to bring it forth to you guys and...
Okay. How, what's the best way for the council to become more educated on, since you listed two here, what the differences are and what the benefits are? What can we do to get up to speed on that? Because we're obviously not firefighters, we don't, or, I'm speaks for myself, I guess. I don't know firefighting, but...
I can give you job classifications.
Okay. But I want to know, like, the benefits and the detriments to both?
Okay.
And then maybe what you would prefer? And then that way we can come to either that meeting or come to a decision with a little bit of background and education on it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
You know, the problem that we're having right now, and this is just a Danville Fire Department, this is all over the United States. Departments are hiring firefighter paramedics to ride the fire engine. Okay, so they'll never see a medic truck. So, with this pandemic, paramedics and EMTs are getting burned out. They would rather just ride on the fire truck, treat the patient, go back to the firehouse. And that's the shortage that we're having right now with paramedics. And I do have some civilian paramedics that love their job and would love to come to work for Danville part-time. But right now, we don't have that, that program in place.
As far as a fire territory, real quick, what is it? It encompasses other people, other townships?
It would, it would be a joint effort between the town of Danville and we could pick center township. Has to be two entities, two government entities. And we could join a fire territory. We could... fire territory. We could set our own tax bracket. I mean, Town Manager Morgan, he divvied into this in 2008. So I want to make sure that we go on record that I've never been against a fire territory. I've always wanted a fire territory. I see what a fire territory can bring to the community. It brings more personnel and more equipment and brings both entities together.
Okay, thank you.
And we visited with Paige the possibility in 2015 of doing that. And then it just, for whatever reason, I don't think we had the support of the Center Township Board or the trustee at the time, so it kind of dissolved.
Right now, the Center Township trustee is open for for any discussions of a territory. I just wouldn't want to lock in on a territory. I'd like to explore the opportunity of maybe a fire district. So that way we're just not locking in on one. I'd like to see what our options are to better the Danville Fire Department and the town of Danville and the community that we serve.
All right, we'll bring that up at another time and we can vote on it.
Okay. That's what I have presented with the budget.
So I had just a quick question.
Yep.
And really, it's probably more directed to Jenny than than you, Rob. But so as Rob was requesting the 10% to be put back into the budget, these items that I'm seeing here with dollar amounts, are they reflective of that?
No.
10% coming in?
No, they are not.
So so then this being a proposed budget is not accurate that we're looking at?
Well, it is. I was just waiting for the direction of you guys. If you wanted to put that 10% back in, I can update reports. I was kind of trying to get an idea after this evening of what direction you guys wanted to go, then I can update reports for the work study Wednesday night. But I'm presenting it as, like, when you look at the current budget, that has the 10% decrease that was approved last year. And so I did not add that back in yet.
So then my statement that that would be correct across all of these departments are correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And whatever pay raises comes about, we would love, love that to be in the budget, too.
And this budget does not include any pay raises for it for any of the funds?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
This one will probably take an hour and 20 minutes. PowerPoint presentation. Andrew Pritchard.
Hour 45.
You guys have a lover quarrel there? What's the deal between you two?
Give the guy a chance.
Hey, if it's a good presentation, he can talk all night.
Rob's just jealous that he doesn't have a PowerPoint.
Oh, wow, PowerPoint?
We did, and then somebody showed up with a PowerPoint at the last one. So I'm like, all right, I'm going to go with it.
I think the more information, the better.
Well, this is nine pages of speaker notes, so hopefully that's enough information.
You would just wish we had 10-foot snows here, don't you?
Nope. I do not.
What's a small snow to you, five feet?
No, it would get normal snowfalls, three, four inches, but it was every day.
Huge snowfalls where you came from?
You could, but honestly, it was the smaller stuff that lasted two or three days. You get four inches one day, four inches the next day.
Good afternoon, Will. As Robert said, good evening. Go ahead, Andrew.
All right. So while he's loading that presentation up, I just want to appreciate everybody for giving me the opportunity. I know you guys had to vote on hiring me and bringing me into this organization. I'm hoping that this presentation will give you guys a better insight on where DPW is sitting fiscally. There are many accounts within DPW that honestly don't really change, so I haven't touched on them in this presentation. This is basically just where there's going to be adjustments, whether it's state adjustment or I'm requesting an adjustment.
It's coming up. Of agreements that we have to go through. There you go.
So the first one I'm going to touch on is the the fuel budget. I touched on this last week. 2021 budget is 160. Year-to-date in July, we were at 99, 772.
That's Parker. I think it's nine.
Sorry. Do we have any of his information in here?
Yes, it is behind tab number nine.
Nine, okay, I'm there.
I've got two pages. Is that what I should have?
Yes.
Okay.
So we've got, in DPW, we have general fund and we have MVH, LRS. So there's multiple different accounts, so.
Okay.
The PowerPoint presentation is not in your binder, if that's what you're inquiring.
Just the summary and the reports that he emailed yesterday. I'm sorry, I didn't make copies. I just assumed you guys would print them off and bring them. So if you need copies, I can get them for you.
So as we spoke last week, going to present that we upped that budget to 225,000 just because a lot of the fuel increases this last year have been political. And I don't know if we see an end in sight as far as that goes. Not a whole lot we can do about that. And then, of course, the addition of more personnel, more equipment is going to increase that as well. And as we grow, I think that's inevitable that we're going to have to continue looking into this in this direction. Because honestly, the the fuel-efficient vehicles, while they will save in the short term, long term, I don't think we can rely on them as much. So the next account I want to look at is the uniform budget. So when I came in last December, I was approached by several employees asking if they could go and buy boots. It was close to the end of the year, and they hadn't gotten their boots yet. Looking at the budget, we were budgeted for $1,000 for the entire department for safety, for uniforms. A pair of boots at Red Wing where we have an account is $170 for a safety tote boot. So obviously, we can't even buy one pair of boots for everybody in the department. So what I'm proposing for next year is an increase to $5,000. And what this is, is there are certain articles of clothing that are required to wear to work within DPW. It would be safety tote shoes, leather gloves, hard hats, safety glasses, hearing protection, reflective clothing, anti-clothing, and that's required. So I believe that it should be our responsibility as the employer to provide that since we are requiring that in order to be employed with the town. OSHA requires that as well.
So, hold on.
Yep.
That $5,000 is buying everything?
Yes.
Buying hard hats and safety glasses.
So what we have, we already have the stock of it. So it's basically replacing as we go. If we have a hard hat that goes, that actually gets used and it gets damaged, then we purchase another one to restock.
Isn't enough? Because we don't require them to do that. OSHA requires all the stuff that you just talked about. So we, as a town, are obligated to supply that to the employees. That's not a question. Is that enough?
Yes, it will be. Because there's other, there are other funds like the the safety clothing. Like this one is actually approved to go out in the street. I can't work out there long-term, but it does have the anti-reflective stripes. So we have other avenues to purchase that if we expend the $5,000. But I'd like to at least bump that up. I didn't want to go $10,000 right off the bat. Take this first year and provide the boots, provide the gloves, hearing protection, eye protection, things like that, and then move forward from where we're at.
And I'll add to that, just so you guys are aware, when just blue jeans are purchased, that is considered a fringe benefit, and the employees are taxed on that. So anything that's not considered safety, like Andy said, reflective gear is considered safety. They're not taxed on that. But if they can wear it outside of their employment, they, it's considered a fringe benefit, and they are taxed on it through payroll.
And you're including boots in that, correct?
If they're not safety boots. If they're safety boots, we don't tax them. If they're regular boots, then we tax them.
How many men you got?
There are 10 of us total, and then we have Cindy, our administrative assistant. So we have, and I'll, that'll come up in one of the other slides, but we have two mechanics, three administration, and eight in the actual department that are out on the street on a daily basis.
Andy, and do you know when the last time an employee was added to your department?
I do not. I know there's been adjustments throughout the years because, of course, DPW was the umbrella, and then things have shifted. So obviously, we've got more employees than than jobs that we had to have in the years past. But I could not tell you when the last time we added employee other than myself.
You know, I feel like, Chris, five grand, I mean, that only buys how many Red Wing shoes? I don't think that's enough. I mean, it's the safety things we're talking about. Is five grand enough?
I do believe so. We, I actually sat down and and figured it out, each pair of gloves, and multiplied it by all the all the actual employees. And $5,000 is light years ahead of $1,000. So we. Yes. And honestly, I can't speak to previous, but it was running that way previously. So I think the $5,000 is a good starting point. And like I said, if, as far as replacement shirts, we have another account that we can purchase those out of because they are covered under the MUTCD.
And the previous.
That if you do start to run short, that we will give you more PPE money.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. We do have a stockpile right now of hearing protection, but as that gets gets used, it's going to be replaced. But so I appreciate the willingness. But I think $5,000 should be able to get us through this.
Okay, thank you.
So touching on employees. So as I stated, we have three administration, two fleet maintenance, one line locator, and five DPW employees. This year's salary budget was 425.9. One of the things coming in that I was looking at was line locator position. And DPW itself does not have any underground utilities, and that's a discussion had with the utilities themselves. And then we had another meeting today, and we discussed that. And I'll get on to where that's going to go later on in the presentation. But basically, moving forward, looking to get some more help down there. So this year, it's going to be a little bit of a shock there. But looking to move the the line locator position into a more independent role, I'm sorry. And discussing this morning, I think we landed on the fact that we would, that position, not the employee, if the the current employee decides he wants to do that, still, that position would then come up to town hall. And what we're looking to do is really take that out because there's so many locates going on right now because of all the construction, that that employee technically isn't doing any DPW work. Today, I had to have him pour concrete, and I'm sure he fell way behind on locates. I didn't ask him exactly how many came in while he was out there, but that takes him away from the locate position. But on the other hand, we needed a DPW employee today, so.
So what you're saying is give him another office? Or do you need another person? See, go ahead.
Bring this up now, or do you want to wait a minute?
Whenever, it's good for you.
I can tell you have some questions. What was proposed with the utilities, Clerk Treasure, myself, Will, is to take that position because, as Andy stated, it it's all about underground stuff. So we thought about bringing them up and moving them into this building, possibly under, we'll be proposing another position to you shortly, but bring them into administrative where they'll be utilizing mapping and helping update all the maps, the GIS, and also doing line locates. Normally, the split is 30%, general 30% water, 30% wastewater, and 10% stormwater. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
What the utilities have agreed to today is if this position is moved out of Public Works, that it would go to a 30% water, 30% wastewater, 30% stormwater, and only 10% in the general fund. So it would relieve up funding in the, or some money in the general fund. And then, of course, with that being said, that opens up one position at Public Works that can be filled. That's being filled currently. Again, he can't, he's hardly able to use the position. So that's what we're proposing is that as you start thinking about the budget, put it in your back of your mind, that we would like to move the util, or the line locate up to underbuilding and planning.
It sounds like you're on the way to solving all that.
We're trying, sir.
Good. Go ahead, Andrew.
And also, on that note, when I first started this discussion, I was actually discussing with Austin, who was our line locator, and he brought up, asking about the truck because the truck is assigned to the, it's an ST number, so it's assigned to the streets. And I told him honestly, it's set up for locates. I don't think it would serve us a purpose. So that would be something that would go with the position. The the truck would be there, so that individual would not have to buy a truck down the road. So that's another thing to think about. But I've got some numbers for you here. 2020 NDOT numbers, we were at 49 linear miles in town. I worked with Lisa last week, took into account all of the the roads that have been recorded, and we have maps of those. This doesn't include a lot of the subdivisions, but we're now up to 51.83 or 85 linear miles. So we added just about three miles to that. But in terms of plowing, that goes to 295 or 293 plowing miles because you figure all the multiple passes. So with four to five individuals on the road at any given shift, if the snow is here and done, not persistent, we can clear the entire town in about two and a half to three hours. If we have a persistent snow, then we run into an issue. In years past, it was, we would utilize the mechanics, utilities, everybody be out there plowing. The problem with that is that they have their own jobs to do as well. If we have a persistent snow like we did in February, there's only so many hours in the day that people can work, and they still have to do their job. And particularly the water department, we had one individual working for us in the morning, and he had to leave while we were still dealing with the snow to go do his water department things. And that's where I'm requesting an additional two people, just to make sure that we're shored up ourselves and not having to rely on the other departments heavily because there comes a point where people are on vacation or there's other emergencies. There's a water main break, a backed-up sewer that are going to take precedence over plowing snow, and then we're back to being shorthanded. So the other aspect of that is we do hold CDLs. And while municipalities are exempt from a lot of the laws, if something happens while you're using your CDL, if you're in a plow truck, and they find out that you've been on the clock for over the maximum hours, not only is the plow driver at fault, but also the, well, liable, I wouldn't say at fault, the plow driver themselves is liable as well as the town. So it becomes a safety issue. If you have people on the road for 14, 16 hours a day, now you're over the maximum amount of time. So we really can't run them that long. So if we get shorthanded, either there's not as many trucks on the road, or the streets don't get plowed. So those are the two downfalls. And in in all actuality, those, it's not just winter time. We've gotten enough work now in the summertime, especially with sidewalks being added and a lot of the patching, that we can use them year-round. We're growing to the point where we can really use them. And as I progress through this presentation, you'll you'll get to see a little bit of the things that we found out through a study that we did as far as our roads. So the next account that I have is overtime. Last year's budget was 2883 or 835, sorry. And I'm proposing 41,000 this year. So in years past, what would occur is if somebody was working the weekend or on time off, once that overtime budget was gone, they would be sent home on Thursday or Friday if they had to work the weekend. Well, the problem with that is you're looking at doing a lot of the extra things, the the square events or other special events. And now the actual work Monday through Friday is not going to be done to the best standard it could be because now you're shorthanded on those weekdays. So coming in, I I requested that we go straight overtime, and then once that's gone, then we'll we'll visit that. But fortunately, I had enough cost savings because I do have one individual that's not. But fortunately I had enough cost savings because I do have one individual that's not at the maximum pay rate. And I was able to work with Jenny to get some money transferred over. So we should be good for the end of the year. But fortunately I've had, I've set up a different schedule as far as the, the weekend events go. I don't want to burn the guys out. So that's why we have two people working every weekend. Most of the time it's just the farmer's market. We, we've worked it out with farmer's market that we set out all the signs on Friday. And then all we have to do is come in and pick those up on Saturday. But there is a minimum time that we pay our employees and that's two hours. It might only take a half hour to do it. But we pay them for two hours to come in here. So that is taken into account. So that's where I'm, I'm leading with this.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but my figures are not matching yours.
What do we have?
Because for overtime, I have fifty-five thousand.
And I also have your current budget at thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-five instead of twenty-eight.
So that is not the updated one that I was going by off of.
So there's another one?
I must not have gotten it. I got your.
Oh, hold on. Let's see what this one is. No, it says fifty-five.
Yeah, all of mine.
Oh, I, no.
I did get your updated MVH, but I didn't get.
So there was a first, first one I sent out. And this may have not been corrected because I realized this late in the process of putting this together that my numbers were incorrect. So having to go back and double check everything.
But I did, I still had, I still have different figures in this.
Okay. Go ahead and proceed. We'll, we'll figure it out on the back end.
Well, the biggest thing to take away is I want to keep that twenty-five thousand in there for winter time. That way there's always that, that buffer there. But really adding overtime for the, the summertime so that we can make sure that we are still getting the town's work done. Plus the, the events that are on the square, the, the things that Danville really appreciates. So hopefully we don't have any more of those hiccups. Office supplies, this is one that originally I had changed that up, but I think we can do fine with thirty-nine seventy-five. We've got to replace a couple of desks, but this year we purchased three computers for our, our iWork stations essentially for the employees to, to log into. And that's a one-time purchase. So we won't be expending that again. Is that number wrong too?
No.
Okay. I just saw Jenny, I was making sure.
Oh, no. You're good. I'm sorry. I'm just.
So the next one is the parts repair and motor supply. This one is. So when I, I came in, Ray had a cheat sheet for all the accounts, what could be spent out of it. So this is a very broad account. But what I'm requesting this year, this is the mechanics toolbox. There's two of them that they work out of that toolbox, which is essentially a home mechanics toolbox. These are some of the tools that I've actually found in that toolbox. And when discussing with them why they have broken tools, it was, we don't want to throw them away because we don't know if we're going to be able to purchase new ones. If you see the, that's actually ground off. So they, it's not much left, life left in it. And then the other thing that we did this year out of this account was we actually built a brine system. This is a homemade brine system. So we take salt, we add it to water and then we, we dilute it and we, we can store it. So that's going to be used this winter initially to both pretreat the roads and also use it as liquid de-icing. So the, the industry as a whole has really started going toward liquid de-icers. And the main thing is the environmental impact. And I would think that there's more salt going down the storm drain because it's water. But what it is, is you're salinating it twenty-three percent. So by the time it hits more water, it dilutes to the point where it's a lot less harmful when it hits the, the streams and, and rivers. So. So in this year, going back to those tools, I'm requesting an increase to forty thousand dollars so that we can get the mechanic's new toolbox, which is very expensive. And then really get them some quality tools so that when they're working on the, the town's equipment and vehicles, then we know that they have the best tools to ensure that the, the vehicles can get repaired. So the other supplies. This, this account is used for DirecTV. And per conversation with Mr. Van Leer a couple of weeks ago, we have actually initiated canceling that. The problem is I already negotiated a price to get it dropped. So now they're wanting to charge us two hundred dollar cancellation fee. So I'm still working on that. But it's also used for mailboxes when we strike mailboxes or mailboxes get damaged in the winter time. And one, one way that we're alleviating this is we have Clear Creek, I believe is the subdivision. They were requiring mailboxes that the posts were four hundred dollars a piece. And so when we damage something, we have to pay for that. So we've actually worked with the HOA and they're, they've started becoming more lax on that. So they aren't requiring that real expensive mailbox post. Plus we're also working with the HOA because a lot of the mailboxes that went down last year, there was only an inch left on the, the post because it was all rotten. But since it went down, when we went by with the snowplow and hit it with snow, we're at fault. So we replaced it.
A lot of whipper sniffer around it and they keep chewing the wood at the bottom.
That's exactly what it is. That combined with all the moisture and, and just, there's nothing left of the post and nobody knows until we, we end up knocking it down. But that's one thing we've been in communication with a lot of the HOAs to, to really push them inspecting, the homeowners inspecting their mailboxes and, and trying to get them replaced before winter time so that we aren't having to foot the bill for all those that were already rotten. But so for this, this year proposing six, sixty-five hundred dollars in that account. So it's a decreasing that account because we don't have DirecTV and trying to minimize exactly or the number of mailboxes we're having to replace. This next one is building maintenance. So we discussed last week about the, the temporary office trailer. Obviously we, we can push that back a couple of years, but this is one thing that we do need some attention to. If you'll see in that, that left picture, that's actually a two by six holding that door up. And because it's rusted at the bottom, the, the door actually would, it stopped operating. So we, we've got a couple of other door frames. The problem is we use salt. And it's a metal building. So it's going to rust away. So we need, really need to look at getting some repairs made on that. And obviously they aren't going to be cheap. And I haven't gotten any estimates on it, but I'm proposing that we, we bump that budget up to fifteen thousand to try to make those repairs. Because this area here is actually the main beam for the building. It's not the door. So that's probably going to have to be completely replaced. So it's not going to be a cheap endeavor. But those are just some of the areas that I've spotted throughout the, throughout the shop that are having some serious issues. So just want to put some money back into that building. If it's going to be there long-term, we want to make sure it's in good shape. So this other services and charges and Jenny started this discussion last week as far as the CDL physicals. We, we cover all the costs for CDL physicals and pre-employment, random drug testing and post-accident testing out of this fund or out of this account. So when the, the physicals go up, I'm just trying to give us a little bit of a buffer so that we can make up that cost. Now, physicals for most people are good for two years, but we do have some individuals, including myself, that are down to a year due to some health reasons. And then, so that will cover that cost. We don't know about the post-accident testing. There's a, Jenny and I have discussed many times about what we're supposed to do. Because it's not clear, somebody two weeks ago got struck in a skid steer. He was up sweeping the, the, he was up sweeping the, the square in the skid steer and a lady ran into him. He's not in a CDL vehicle, but per the policy, he still has to be drug tested. So that's where this, that money comes out of this fund here. So I, with us not having a guarantee of how many we're going to have to do a year, that's why I haven't really played with that other than pushing it up, knowing that the CDL physicals are going up in price. So now we're into the MVH account. So these are out of general fund. These are all state funded for vehicle tax, gas tax, things like that. This paving expense, bump this one just the three percent for the projected state revenue increase. This is also the account, and I'm sure somebody else is going to take the, the bull by the horns here, the, the discussion of a, a public works director. And when we had our meeting this morning, talked about having a stipend, just like the assistant town manager. And I was looking at my regulatory sheet to know exactly what I can use for each account or what each account can be used for. And this account can actually be used for personnel too. So I, instead of putting another burden on the utilities, I said, well, why don't we take this out of the MVH account if it's, as long as it's legal? And Jenny's going to be looking into that with, you say.
Financial advisor.
Financial advisor. And so that would be covered under this, this amount. And the, the amount for that stipend would actually be covered under the three percent increase from the state if that's what the revenue increase is. Paving and sidewalks is an account that we use out of DPW. That is our sidewalks, all of our asphalt. Anything that we're doing in-house is coming out of this account. So we have the state accounts that are used for the contracted work. This is what we use. We've seen a, a large uptick in the sidewalk program from a couple of years ago. And I, I know Jenny has said that in about four years, it hasn't been used. So bring it back on. We've got a lot of requests. And that combined with a lot of the, the streets starting to fail. I've actually requested an increase to a hundred and thirty thousand. And that's, that's going along with having enough personnel to make up all of that work. So that kind of goes hand in hand, but that is my request to go to a hundred and thirty thousand. The LRS supplies budget, that is what pays for all of our street equipment to be repaired. It also pays for our street side of our stockpiles at the shop. We've split it four ways. And that's what this come, this budget is what it comes out of. So this one, as we sit right now, we're just over a hundred thousand dollars. So we have plenty of funding in there. It is based on state increases, local roads and streets. But the biggest thing on this one is just like the, the accidents and snowfall, it's, there's no guarantee that you're going to have your equipment up. I was talking to Mr. Van Leer a couple of weeks ago as well about, we had a dump truck go down. The mechanic actually thought that it was the engine because it looked like it was coming out of the block. Fortunately it was the, the water pump. So it was a, if it had been the engine, it would probably would have been a fifteen thousand dollar repair because it was a diesel dump truck. Fortunately it was just a couple of hundred dollars, but that, those are the things you don't know. So I didn't want to decrease this budget immensely, but we, we are sitting pretty well right, as of right now. So I think that we can make some adjustments here and, and maybe move some money around elsewhere, wherever you guys would like. So the supplies, this one is all of our signs. And this, Chris was, what I was talking about, we have another account that covers all the MUTCD items. So anything that's covered under the MUTCD, which is the, the. And Indiana even has their own. They went and changed it. So it's an IMUTCD. But they cover everything that pertains to traffic control and whether that's somebody out in the street wearing a vest or whether it's the painting on the road is all covered under that book and it's an eight hundred and forty-one page manual. It's a, it's a fun read when you need to. But I'm requesting forty thousand for next year's budget. The biggest reason for that increase is coming in, I really want to make sure that we're doing our, our best as far as signage goes. I don't know if you guys have been on the square. We purchased brand new type three and type two barricades, brand new signage, just ensuring that we're doing everything legally so that if something were to happen, if some, if a driver decided they were going to plow through the square on a special event, legally we're covered. So we cannot be held liable. If we don't have the proper signage, the, the lawyers will come, come after the people that close the road down. So I want to make sure that we're doing our best. And this is a method of doing that, just upping the budget a little bit so we can continue to, to buy those items. And I was talking to some of the guys today that honestly, we, we plan on losing ten to fifteen cones a year, two or three barricades a year, people hit them. And so this will just give us a, a way to not only bulk up our stockpile to make sure we have enough, but also replace the things that get damaged throughout the year. And then in addition to that, we, all of our street signs, the, the street names, we don't keep all those on hand, but I would like to at least have one or two extras just to ensure that if something goes down, we don't have to wait for it to be manufactured and sent to us. The salt winter materials, pretty self-explanatory. As much as we don't want to think about it, it is going to be here soon. This year the, the price of salt actually went down. In addition to that, coming from snow country, we had, we had the ability to demo a lot of different snow blades. And this year I've chosen to switch over to a different style of snow blade that in past practices, we were able to get four and five years out of these snow blades. So that's one thing. Going to decrease this budget from a hundred thousand to ninety-five thousand. Of course, next year's salt might be a little bit higher. I don't want to take it down too much, but knowing that we have longer lasting snow blades, we can take that budget down to a point where we'll still be able to cover our salt. And if we do need one or two blades, because they are, instead of having a solid blade on a plow, now they're in section. So if we lose one, we can replace just that section. We don't have to buy a whole new set. So this account, other services and charges, this is actually all the street lighting. Honestly, I don't do a whole lot with this account. I, I know that we have the balances on a monthly basis, but at the end of the day, the clerk treasurer's office pays all the, the fee, the, the bills for the street lighting. So I put in a three percent increase just in case the, the energy market goes up as it has been with the fuel. Everything follows the fuel. So.
And I'll add to that because it is my office's responsibility to handle all the utilities for the town. And we always reach out to Duke and Vectren. And that is exactly what Andy said, to anticipate a three percent increase.
So the next line item is the new equipment budget. This year proposing three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in new equipment. That's multiple pieces of equipment. First one's going to be to replace ST twelve. This is the truck that I came in. We had some mechanical issues with it. It was up on the rack. So I, I went under and took a gander at it. It's a nineteen ninety-five truck. So it's, it's seen some winters pushing snow. The battery box is actually held on by zip ties. I, I had a desire to change it out this last year, but we got it through. We even replaced some leaf springs. It was minor at the time, but it's time that, that gets replaced. And, and what I'm looking at is buying not only the, the dump truck, but also it's going to be a plow truck. So getting the spreader and the plow all in one, all in one purchase. So then it's all brand new when it comes. The next item is replacing ST eight, which is a two thousand two gas one ton. It's basically just used for garbage collection on the square and a pickup truck now. It's been used as a plow previously and, and so the engine's no longer strong enough to really do a whole lot of work. It's limped through most of the time, but it'd been, it was one of the requests when I first showed up to, to see about getting that replaced. Next one is to replace our man lift with a, a bucket truck designed to do trees. Currently, if we have a tree go down, we're going to be out there with the man lift, which seven miles an hour is the maximum speed. So it takes a little while to get it across town. But this is also an item that I've been in discussion with Will on. They have a desire to retire their man lift as well. So one thing that I would be looking at is buying a used bucket truck for about thirty-five thousand is what got a quote for. And then. And then trading our man lift to Parks, taking theirs, and then just taking whatever revenue we could get off an auction. But that way, they would have a perfectly good man lift, and then we would have a piece of equipment that we could respond quickly to trees with. This is one, I know coming in last December, Tom, you had said something about repaving all the streets. I'm an asphalt guy. And so the roller that we currently have can compact up to two inches. I want to replace that with one that can do at least four inches because when we go out to patch utility cuts or we mill and patch, I want to be able to make sure we get our compaction rate of 90% or better. And right now, if you're going four inches, you cannot get that. And that 18,000 does include a trade-in with the smaller roller. This used patch truck, this is one thing that I've been looking at. Again, the host fund, that was one of the wishlist items, and that was a brand-new one at 165,000. But I have found them for 35,000. What the patch truck is, it's, it's an all, everything's all in one shop. So it has a jackhammer on it, it has the tack oil on it, you can carry a compactor on it. And instead of having to shovel three tons of asphalt, this one actually, it'll carry five to six tons. And it has an auger system, so you can put it directly in the hole. It saves a lot of backaches on the guys that have to shovel three tons of asphalt from the trailer to the hole. And then this one is the crack sealer. I was surprised when I showed up and we didn't have a crack sealer. So that's, crack sealing is one of the main, main jobs to preserve our pavements. Once water infiltrates that roadway, it's done. So crack sealing, and especially being able to do it in-house, not having to pay the extra money to contract it out, definitely preserves the roads for longer terms. And I have seen many that were under this amount, but most of them were on auction sites. So 25,000 is about where you can get a used one. And then speaking of the spreaders, the spreader in ST-12, what we're looking at with that brine system, we've actually found a company that does combination spreaders. They do liquid and granular all in the same spreader, all with a flip of switch. And next week, I've actually got a capital expenditure request to purchase three of these initially out of the 2021 budget. So that combined with ST-12 being replaced, these last two would finish out our larger fleet with those spreaders. So then we can, we can apply either granular or liquid to all of our roads. So the paving expense budget, this one, kind of a scary number. It's multifaceted on requesting this. I've got another slide to, that I can bring forward as far as the condition of our roadways. But the one thing that really worries me is the community crossing grant. Once we hit 10,000 residents in the town of Danville, it goes from a 75-25 to a 50-50 split. So that's a very significant jump. This year, we've requested a million dollars' worth of work, and at 50-50, now we're going to need to come up with 500,000. So going at the 350, that combined with other MVH accounts, at least is going to offset that a little bit. And I believe from what Jenny was saying, our MVH accounts are sitting pretty well as far as a surplus. And do you have any, do you have any numbers on that?
I don't, and I won't till next week.
Okay. But I was under the assumption that we spend everything the state gave us every year. And I was, actually explained to me that, no, the previous councils had wanted to pull some back and hold some back for other projects, other events. And so I, that's where I'm, I'm asking for a little bit more, just because I do know that the roads are in need of attention, and we're coming up on that 10,000 mark to where it could cost us a lot more money to try to go for that matching grant. Then this, this budget is where we get all of our crack sealing materials, our spray patching materials. It's surface treatments is what this fund is for. And if we were to buy a crack seal machine, this account is where the crack seal, crack sealant would actually be purchased out of. So last year's budget was 25,000, asking for 35,000. That's in conjunction with the new crack seal trailer. If we can get that new crack seal trailer, we're going to really hit the crack sealing hard and heavy. So that's the extra $10,000 there. But that is another MVH account. Then if you recall, in May, I was out of town, had LB come forward before you guys with a capital expenditure request to have Iwork come in and do a pavement assessment on our roads. And I had a feeling on where it was going to go, but this is actually what they found. So RSL, to think about it, these numbers down here are all years, so zero to 20 years old. This is our entire road system, 900 and some square yards. So we're at a 6.22 RSL remaining service life. So that's an average of 6.22 years remaining on the roads. And if you'll, you'll see, six years and less is 61% of our roadways. And that's, that's a large number. Most municipalities try to keep it between a 10 and a 14 average RSL remaining service life. But we're well below that. So that's where I'm, I'm coming forward with a lot of requests to try to up our game on the, on the infrastructure side, the transportation infrastructure. And then this one-
Wait a second. What's the 20 at the end?
20 years. So that's 20 years, 20 years remaining. So those are brand-new streets.
Yeah.
So a street is, lifespan is 20 to 25 years. After the first seven years, that's where you want to start focusing on crack sealing if you were to do chip sealing, fog sealing, things like that, to seal the road back up.
Okay.
So it's every seven to 10 years, you're going to need to maintain it. But essentially, they give it 20 years service life to start out. So that's where we're, we're well below that on most of our roads. And unfortunately, and I really wish that the map was available, they're, they're having problems that Iwork, getting our map to load up for us. I've been working with them, but I do have these numbers, but the map would have shown exactly in color code on our road system of what roads were actually in disrepair. But these are the numbers that I have. And just really want to bring your attention to the fact that we're, that we're suffering pretty hard on our infrastructure. And this is a similar information table, but this one actually breaks it out into, into linear feet, what lengths of road. So you look at six years and less, we're looking almost 200,000 feet up there is where we're at. And then you look above there, and we're 140,000 feet or so. So that's where our roads are at now. And like I said, that's where I'm really trying to push this preventative maintenance with the crack seal trailer, the patch truck, and upping those, those MVH funds so we can get some paving money to try to, to really help. Because having this information, in addition to the possibility that we're going to be a 50-50 split on the community crossing grant, it's kind of scary in my eyes as far as how are we going to get this done? So that's, I just want to make you guys aware of that. And the information that we have now, at least we know where, what we're looking at so we can maybe make an attempt at resolving that.
Andy, do you believe that, actually, if you could go back to the slide with the years on the bottom?
Yep.
Do you anticipate trying to more evenly distribute that, you know, the age of roads over time?
Yes. So every year, Iwork actually has a budgeting system so we can put our dollar amounts in there. It'll, it'll explain to us what roads we actually need to do for crack sealing this year, for fog sealing, the preventative side, and as well as the roads that are down here that are already gone, where they need to be rebuilt. So if I put that number into that system, it'll tell me exactly what I can get done. I just have to get all the, the amounts from the plants to find out exactly how much asphalt's running that year. But I can figure out exactly what roads need to be done at what time. And yes, to answer your question, so once we redo a road, obviously, these ones are past trying to save. So once you redo a road, it goes up to 20. So these ones will start dropping down, and then basically, you want to have most of your roads within this area. I think eight to 14 is optimal, 10 to 14 is even better. But yes, as soon as you start fixing those roads, then it does change the bar graph. And this is a live document. This is not something that's right here and now. If we go fix a road today, I can update it in there.
Excellent. Thank you.
So the future of DPW, this is one thing coming in. I came from an area that they were previously in general fund, and they had established a street impact fee, or not a street impact fee, a street maintenance fee. And that's how they became self-funded. And knowing how tight the, the general fund is in, in Danville, and knowing the tax system and exactly how that works, I really wanted to look for that avenue of becoming self-funded so we could get it out of general fund. Not only does that free up more money in the general fund, but also it gives a little bit more flexibility on budgeting within DPW as a whole, whether that be personnel or materials, equipment. And so one idea that Jenny had brought forward was doing a non-reverting fund, just like Parks Department did in previous years, just to try to pull us out of the, the general fund. I haven't been around long enough to know exactly how that works, but I'm sure I can get some pointers down the road. But that's one thing that Jenny, Mark and I were discussing yesterday, that we can't get it done by this year. But looking toward the 2023 budget, trying to push DPW into a non-reverting fund so that we can pull out a general fund.
So I will add to that. Greg had asked, or suggested that we do a three-year financial analysis, have our, one of our financial advisors do that for us. I'm waiting to get quotes back on having that done. But along those lines, I'm also going to have them, because I don't know enough of the laws within the state of Indiana, if this is even something that we can do. But I'm having them check into that. We have a park non-reverting fund, of course, as you guys know. And Andy has a lot of good ideas of fees and different things we, you know, could charge. So I'm in the process. I mean, this is going to be a couple, probably two years down the road because you've got to start somewhere. But I'm in the process of working with our financial advisor team to see what that would entail and what we would need to do.
How big was the town you came from?
I just saw in the news that they were at 55,000 with the census. It, it's a little bit skewed because it's a university town. So they're probably about 75,000 when school's in session. There are 23,000 students, but give or take, that's just living on the streets, it's not on campus, is where they're at. And when I got there, they were at 45. So it was a significant growth. That was with the university at 45.
So you had about 4,000 or 5,000 people, and you had 23,000 students?
Mm-hmm.
That was a lot of people in that town.
Yeah. And like I said, it was, it had grown substantially in the 14 years I lived there, and it definitely changed. But same thing there, it might be a bigger city, but street department there, DPW here, same struggles. And there's no good answer for it. It's expensive, and it's not fun. But we did have a director came, that had come in and really worked and really pushed for some, some other avenues. But in the state of Indiana, I'm not real sure about the laws of what, what all we can do as far as charging. Because I know that the, what are the circuit breakers, the maximum, it's the 1%, 2%, 3% property taxes, and they didn't deal with that out there. So just coming up with a different method of, of funding because it is going to become an issue. Now, we do have the street impact fees that are going to come on, or road impact fees that are going to come online probably in a year and a half or so. At that time, we can improve the studied areas. That does not, that doesn't cure all of the areas, but at least it'll be a little bit of a help for the, the areas that we've already been studied and identified as being trouble areas. So the other idea that I had for future funding is currently, when we annex any property that's in the county, immediately, as soon as it's annexed, the town's actually responsible for the county road that is adjacent to that property. And it's not just in front of the, the annexed property, it is from one side of the road to the other. So one idea I had is writing the new ordinance, the codes, the ordinance book, maybe trying to push toward putting a lot of that responsibility onto the developers. When they come in and want to annex property as far as larger sections of property, having them redo the county road that they're, they're adjacent to. That way, we aren't taking a road that's subpar, it was built 60 years ago, not up to today's standards, and making sure that that, that doesn't become a financial obligation to the town to try to fix a road that's already bad. So that was one of the other options I, that I was looking at. And finally, additional grants. We're, we're in the process of looking at hiring grant writers and just trying to find more grants so that while it's not going to get us off the hook completely, at least we aren't paying 100% of the money, just going out and finding grants and writing those grants and trying to really go toward that avenue. And honestly, it's a, I think we'd be best served to do all of the above and really try to, to help the taxpayers in this town out. Any questions?
Nice presentation. Thank you.
I have a few, so I'll let someone else go.
I just have, I probably have this someplace. I was just looking, what's the, what's your total requested budget?
I did not run those numbers.
Okay.
I actually thought about it, but then that mind thought went out.
I think, Andy, if you could update tomorrow this series account, your Excel spreadsheet, the 2022 proposed budget-
Okay.
-and explanation of changes, send it to all of us and total it, just so I can cross-reference in our accounting software.
Yep.
I think that would be helpful.
I can do that.
Actually, on that, is it possible for any department heads to, we could see 2020 actual, 2021 budget, 2021 year-to-date, and then the requested budget for '22?
Yeah, I could have each, each department head work on that tomorrow on Friday in Excel spreadsheet-
Okay.
-and send it to you guys.
Okay. So I have a few questions, if you guys don't mind. Jenny, one question for you, and then I'll go to Andrew. If, so in all these requests, we'll just use his for example, if he gets close to the end of the year and he, and he's not, not going to use all the budget money for a specific line item, can they go get that money and move it into a different line item?
So what they can do, we'll use this as an example. Any of the last three numbers, so like we're looking at salary and wages being 101, and then by expense, and then the health benefits, anything that the first number matches-
Mm-hmm.
-the department head and myself can make a transfer on or off.
Okay, okay.
If he, and you cannot transfer salary and wages to any other expenditure line item. But let's say that he has money left in supplies, which is 200, and he wants to move that down to paving expense, that takes approval of the council. So that's when you see in October, November, December, I come before you with resolutions to transfer, that's what they're doing. If they have excessive amounts left in one line item compared to the other, then they'll come before you. Or it goes back into our overall cash pool.
Okay, thank you.
And that's what brings back up the cash reserve.
So I'm going to, just a few questions here, going back to the very beginning. On the fuel, at 99,000 through July, that annualizes to about 170,000 for the year.
Yes.
I would imagine gas prices in July were much higher than they were in January.
Yes, they are.
So that's probably not a fair number to annualize it that way. So you might be looking at 180, 190 for the year.
I believe we, we predicted about 200.
You did predict 200?
Yes.
At the last, I don't want to interrupt you, but I want to give you more information. At the last week's work study, fuel is in the non-departmental because it touches every department. So last week, Andy came before you requesting the 200,000 for the fuel. So that's why you don't see that in Andy's individual budget.
So what's our, do we have like a seasonal-
So, what's our, do we have like a seasonal usage where we go really high in our fuel usage, or is it pretty spread out all year round?
You know, I looked at it, so I took that February weekend where we were out there plowing 24 hours a day for five days straight, or three days straight. Then I took July where we, we had a fill-up, or I think we had three fill-ups in one week. It was about $12,000 in fuel. And gallons to gallons, it was pretty equal on those peak times. So, I can't say that there's going to be a peak time off to peak time, but obviously, we aren't running snow plows in July, so we don't have to worry about that. So, it kind of offset itself.
Okay. So, kind of leading, that kind of leads into my next question. You're wanting to add, so the two employees that you're wanting to add, what's the main driver behind that? Like, you're deficient here and so you need new employees.
So, the primary driver is that currently, we don't, if we have somebody on vacation, like pouring sidewalks, I generally let my work slide so that I can be out there working.
Okay.
So, we're shorthanded across the board, whether it's winter time or summertime. We've got a lot of things that were changed this year. So, I made sure, coming in, I heard that it was all about the mowing. So, this year, I talked to the mechanics and I said, hey, can we work something out? You guys can do your mechanic work in the morning, because they aren't as heavy in the summertime and they've been doing all the mowing this year.
Okay.
So, I'm really working things around there, trying to get more people out on the street to be able to take care of the other things.
Okay. The reason I'm asking too is, I wonder, because you started with snow plowing and things like that, and of course, that, coming with that, we need new vehicles, snow blades and things like that. Is it possible to contract that work out from a town perspective? Is that something that maybe we could look into? Because then I would think that your annual expense would be a lot lower. And I'm not saying replace any employees that we have now, but as we grow, is that something we could look into?
Well, and Avon does contract all their work. I can't speak to this area. I don't know what the contractors would charge. Out there, it was completely different world, different equipment used, so I can't even speak to that, but.
And of course, we'd have to make sure we don't get, you know, attention at 2:00 in the afternoon when half the day's over.
Yeah.
But I think, I mean, it might be something to at least look at as well, because, you know, it's, obviously, you're asking for a lot of increases across the board. So, just want to make sure that that makes sense for us to do.
And David, I don't mean to interrupt real quick, but just to piggyback a question on yours.
Sure.
About that, is, do you anticipate any encumbrance of any funds for new equipment from this year for next year?
No, with the three spreaders that I'm requesting this year, I believe I have, I think 30,000.
Okay.
So, there might be.
Which is efficient, so.
I wouldn't be encumbering that money, that would probably be spent or returned. But as of right now, I'm not, I don't have anything real pressing. I wanted to get those purchases done before I pushed any further. I don't want to go over budget.
Okay. Thank you. Just two more questions. This might sound like a silly question, but you have three admins. Now, I know I have to take my CPA hat off, but when I, when I see a department of eight to 10 people and you've got three admins, I think, well, do you really, you know, what, I guess, do you have, are they part-time or are they all full-time? What are their duties generally?
Well, and the administrative assistant is actually paid out of all of the department, the utilities and us, because she does the claims for the water and wastewater. But, and actually, Alby and I are both paid out of them as well.
Okay.
So, we aren't.
So, you're a part of that administrative staff?
Exactly.
That's what that is?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then, last thing, on those vehicles, you asked for 360 and then you broke it down. How did you come up with those individual numbers? Did you get quotes?
Just doing research online.
Research online, okay.
Yep. Because I don't believe that we need the flashy, warranties are great, but something that's lasted for seven, eight years in a municipality is being swapped out in larger areas, and so it's still got lots of life in it. So, let's, let's start small and then as we go on, at least we have something under our belt to where we can get things under control at a less expensive method. Before we go out and spend 165,000, like I said, that and the host fund was more of, if there's money in there, we can do that. But since there wasn't, and watching these guys, like the patch truck, for instance, watching these guys shovel three tons of asphalt, carrying it from the trailer to the hole and back multiple times, I've used patch trucks for many years. And at the end of the day, those guys are just worn out and it takes a toll on them long-term, if that's what they're doing every day.
I'm a believer in not using budgeted money just because it's there. So, I assume that when, if, in fact, that's approved, and the time comes and makes those purchases, you're not, you're going to look at multiple options and multiple sources, is what I'm hearing you say?
Yes.
Good. All right.
And David, I will add to one of your questions. I have seen in meeting with clerk treasurers via Zoom the last couple of weeks, because we do all try to work together on 2022 budgets to get ideas from each other. There are several communities that are going to exactly what you said, outsourcing plowing and outsourcing maintenance. I'm not saying I recommend it, I just am seeing it done a lot.
Yeah, I think it's always worth looking into. I'm not trying to get rid of employees, but we are using taxpayer dollars, so we have to make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck, so.
One, I think to your other point, the level of service, being able to guarantee that.
That's definitely something to consider. You don't want a bunch of angry residents.
All right.
Any other questions?
Good job. Thank you very much. We're going to take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Wow, I get that. Robbie, you were right.
There is a larger trash can out in the hallway if you guys want to use it. If not, we'll pick these trash bags up and get them tomorrow.
I was tired the other day. Oh, I don't know why.
I'll take care of it.
The dog is licking my leg out of it. I might as well do it now.
At one point, I thought we were watching a congressional filibuster.
Is that Andrew?
Yeah, maybe I have to pee even more, thank you.
I peed on my leg, but that's all right. Oh, thank you.
My staff calls me that. They're like, open 24/7.
If you ever get robbed or stolen with a truck or something?
Yeah. Then I'm in trouble.
Well, I think you need to powder.
Yeah, I know. I was listening to Andy, I was getting hives because he wants so much money.
Should have brought my red pen.
Coming from the park that operates on a shoe string, right?
I know. I don't know if I feel better or worse going after him.
Parks Department's all of a sudden going, hey, maybe we should just ask for more.
I'll take 50% of what he's asking for.
Actually, probably double my budget.
The numbers I have aren't correct for him either. He wants to increase them.
Boss is back.
All right, he's back.
Back again.
Guess who's back?
Okay, thank you for having me up here, of course.
You're welcome.
I'm going to start out just highlighting a couple of things before we get into the narrative part. One is the priority projects list. This is something, you guys have seen this several times and always talk about it, but it is kind of our plan for the next five years of where our projects are. Half of them aren't funded, but it's where our goals versus what the citizens want, you know, trying to follow that path. We just recently had, oh, we haven't finished it yet, but the master plan, we've got a lot of surveys and stuff. So, a lot of the stuff you're going to see in my budget is really from the citizens, what the citizens want and kind of like our path. Another portion of that too, the way I have ours laid out, we do have the five-year projection so you can look over and see, you know, where our trends have been. I know the past two years are not the best to look at just because of the COVID numbers, but on most of the accounts, it's fairly accurate and we have been trending towards the positive. Also, revenue generation, so our department kind of runs a little bit different, little bit of a business model involved in that. We have a lot of micro businesses, being in the wedding industry, the fitness industry, the aquatics industry, you know, all those different things. And, you know, our goal is not to make money, but our goal is not to lose money as well. So, I believe we're pretty, pretty good at doing that. Right now, if you take all of our numbers together, we actually generate 70% of our revenue to operate our whole department. The biggest minus is really just full-time staffing, you know, we can't catch up with that one. But the rest of them, you know, we are doing a really good job. And you saw the master plan presentation from Austin, you know, the normal is 30 to 40%, and we're operating at 70. And we have a smaller staff than most do, so we're doing a lot more with less. So, I just want to kind of precursor that before I jumped into my stuff here. Okay, so, starting with the narrative here, as you can see up here, I just wanted to highlight things and have them in front of you. I know when you look at a bunch of numbers, sometimes you can get lost, and we'll go through the numbers as well. But just kind of looking at the 101 account, in that account, you know, I'm asking for the 10% back, which I know you talked to Rob about that too. I just, you know, wanted to get that 10% back, because, you know, we operate on pennies anyway, so I need to make those pennies count. Also, that idea of maybe moving the 101 into the 204, I know we had talked about it before. I talked about it a little bit with Ann as well. And that's kind of where that request, moving forward of having another person, a maintenance person, and I'll get down to that one here in a second.
Can you explain exactly what that means? What's the significance?
So, the 101 is, the 101 and 204 are pretty much the same kind of things. The 101 is like where we originated from, it's just a general account. The goal with the 204 was to start making, hey, this is what Parks is, so you can look at the budget and see what the impact of Parks is. Because before, we're all kind of lumped into the same 101 number and it's very hard to see what your portion of the pie is. Like, you guys just coming in, you would be able to see immediately, oh, I just need to look at 204. I know everything Parks is doing in 204. So, it's kind of streamlining it a little bit, I would say. And then also, when you move them all over, you can, you can see what percentage of tax dollars are actually used to fund the park. So, it kind of helps just streamline things more than anything. And we've been gravitating towards that way. I think it was three years ago now, I believe, that we switched to the 204 and then hopefully eventually we'd move it all to 204, just so it's easier. With that too, same thing in the 204, getting that 10% back. If we did take the 101 and move it to 204, that's where I'd like to see that, that maintenance position. We are spending a lot of time, I don't know if you've been to Ellis Park, but it is packed all the time. Our maintenance route is almost doubled, just in the trash graffiti vandalism. The hardest part is we almost can't catch up and do the projects because we're so busy with broken things from the weekend or the amount of abuse that happens. And so, that's really where that. Um, and so that's really where that need is just growing by the amount of the use in there.
Well, I thought, I thought Ray's had a regular route through the park. Is that not right?
No, you're looking at him. I just did it this weekend.
So Ray's truck doesn't come and pick up trash?
The only thing Ray's does is pick up the dumpster every day because we almost fill it every day.
Okay.
The full-size dumpster, if that tells you anything. Um, you know, we're, we're averaging, I mean, every day we at least have twelve half-to-full trash bags and then on the weekends, we're looking at twenty-five. So, I mean, it is, it's full and, and sometimes, you know, you come in on the weekend, you're only supposed to be here two hours in the shelter house rental. They leave all their trash out. Now the raccoons are in it. Boom, you got three, four hours just picking up after them. So it's, it's, it's the growth. I mean, it's a good and bad problem, right? It's good, cause we know everyone's using our stuff, but it's bad because the more use, the more abuse and the more time you have to spend to keep things safe. And that's kind of the biggest driver in this. And we've been asking for it for probably three or four, maybe in five years, just because of that growth. And now it's to the point where like, I need it. Life depends on it. So, um, that's, that's one of the biggest things here, I mean, out of this budget. That's, that's my, my go-to. Um, some of these other things are just updating and routine things. If you, if you drop down to the new equipment, I know you guys had asked previously if we would put our items instead of directly put them in, into host, put them back in our budget. Hey, here's the new equipment, cause we've never had new equipment budget item. And so I made sure I put those in there. They have navigated to the host, of course. But I wanted to make sure that, you know, I was honoring what you guys were, were telling me. Um, just running down to that same realm in the two-on-four. You have the, the lift, Andy and I have been negotiating with that. And then also, um, Chris actually has gave us some good ideas on, on some possible um, deals that we can work and stuff to, to bring that down. Um, a truck, you know, we're trying to do a rotation every three years so that, you know, our, our last one will be on like twenty or twenty-five years old before we trained it in, but at least that way we won't have dying stuff all the time. It'll just be old and we're fine with old, you know, just long as it works and doesn't nickel and dime us to death. Um, and then the mower, we just rotate every other year on the mower as well. Uh, lifeguard, so we had a real struggle getting lifeguards this year and then actually having them work as well. So, uh, our goal is to try to raise, uh, the, just the nominal fee, the, the salaries that they have so that we can compete with some of these other things going around. We do know Washington Township is putting in a brand-new pool and now our lifeguard pool is gonna be even scarier because, you know, more than likely you're gonna wanna work at the new cool place over our old and, you know, kind of used place. So, um, our goal is to try to do that. We, we'd like to keep Danville kids too, so we're looking at some ways where maybe we can train staff to get lifeguard certified. Maybe we teach our own class and stuff like that, so we, we just have to mold to the environment and the environment right now for lifeguards is, it's tough.
How, how old does, uh, someone have to be to be a lifeguard?
So I think we even hired fifteen-year-olds this year, which is really sketchy sometimes, but actually those were some of our best workers. Just their size is the only thing I, I'm a little worried about, but um, they were some of our best workers, really, the young ones. And that's good too, cause that means we have a crop for the future, you know, kind of grow them up, keep them, especially if they're gonna come back and get a dollar raise, you know, they're more likely to come back. And that's been a big trend too, is we get like two years out of them and then they're gone. Um, just because they can go and make more and it's completely understandable, but if we can keep that rotation coming in, I think it'll be good for us. Um, non-reverting, a lot of that stuff's the same, just looking at some new equipment, some DAC stuff and finishing the gutters at the Blanton House. Um, impact fees, looking on trail design stuff. I really wanna, um, look at the, uh, I'm calling it the inner urban trail, but it hasn't been named that yet, but from town hall out to the fairgrounds, that's what I wanna do is the first phase. So we're looking at possibly do some pre-construction design and find out how much it'll really cost. And then next year, I'm looking to go and, and go get some grants. Um, I've been, already been rubbing elbows and doing all the stuff to try to get in to, so I can get my feet wet and compete with the Carmels, Hamilton County stuff. And, uh, luckily, you know, Van Dalia and BNO struck this year, which means they're probably not gonna get next year, so it, it really is the time to strike next year, so I really wanna push forward on that. Um, that's also with that food and beverage, that would be my matching funds. Um, ARP, that's just something I've been looking at too. We've been meeting on that. I don't know where that is yet. We're still working on that, but uh, one of the major things, you know, in those surveys was that the citizens really want us to start rehabbing our facilities, you know, and, and taking care of them. Bring them up to higher levels and, and that's what I wanna do. You know, that's kind of our goal. And we, we've had them on our list. Um, it's just, you know, we're just nipping out on that list as, as fast as we can and Playscape is a big one on there for me. It is completely safe the way it is. It's just old. And so our, our goal is to try to go in and, and reface Playscape pretty much, just modernize it, keep it the same, cause of the nostalgia with, with it, but like new wood, new slides, new swings, you know, do all that stuff. And that playgrounds are crazy, cause if you think about that playground, if you build it today, it'd be three hundred thousand dollars. So, yeah, pretty crazy. Um, let's see here. Host, we kind of already talked about that one before and, and that's where I wanna look at those restrooms. I'm ready to make a move on those restrooms and get them beefed up. And I wanna make them ADA too. That's a big, um, passion. A lot of the stuff that was done in the park was never ADA. And so when we redo them, our goal is to bring them up to the standards. So, uh, and then other things to consider, I just put that on there. This was our department thing, but, uh, full-time for the community engagement coordinator at some point. Um, and then someday moving that IT all in, into each department's budget to make it easier to budget for, and makes everybody more responsible for their piece of the pie as well.
That's, just for clarification, that's coming out of the host?
No, that, like, it would be to use general fund dollars, re-evap, you know, re-roll them back into each department's budget so that when you add a new computer, you're paying for the use of that new computer. So what, what you would do is say it's a hundred thousand dollars for the IT. Fire gets ten, bubble gets ten, 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 right? In, out of the general fund, you're just adding to their regular funds. Now they're responsible for their piece of the pie. So when they wanna grow their department, IT-wise, they have to pay for it.
Okay.
Cause right now it's, it's, it's big fun, so it makes you less likely to be accountable for your use of it, so.
Currently it's paid out of the general non-departmental and host.
And those are just my ideas anyways. I know they're a lot harder once you get into the details and the weeds. Um, so just running through the general numbers there, feel free to shoot stuff at me, um, as you see, and we'll jump into the actual physical numbers. So in the one-on-one, general fund operating.
Two-point-seven million isn't a mistake.
Yeah, I fixed that online. I just wanted you to approve that one. But that was last year's or this year's, right? I do like that number though. So, uh, that's just as we talked about, the one-on-one, two-on-four, same thing, um, and you know, really looking at adding that maintenance personnel just to, uh, kind of alleviate some of the stress, but also to fix some of these projects. We can save a lot of money by doing these things in-house and we have the talents. The problem is we don't have any time. So I think we can say, I mean, even that seventy-five thousand dollars, you know, we would, I think we'd be able to cut that down quite a bit just by having another staff member that could focus on the project. That's all I really have for the one-on-one. Any questions on that?
As a staff member, would you consider reducing the overtime?
Uh, yeah, of course. I mean, really, if you add one more, I could probably almost eliminate it. So, yeah. Uh, just with this one, this is the two-on-four, so you have the revenues in there and then also the expenses. Um, and you can kind of see, this one's kind of hidden because it is a general account. You know, it is taking into fact that the revenues from the pool, um, are in there. This year, you know, don't quote me on record yet, cause I still have some final payroll numbers, but it was a really good year, like talking maybe thirty thousand dollar surplus. So, uh, one of the best years we've had probably in like five years. So I'm excited and nervous about that. So it was a really good year. Um, we did conserve, 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 cause we didn't know what this year was gonna bring, so that, that helps a lot too, and the staffing and stuff. So kudos to our staff really just for, to, you know, tighten up the buckle a little bit and focusing on that revenue. Um, concession stand, pool receipts, all that stuff, pretty much the same, following some trends in there just with the numbers. Um, running down the two-on-four, we kind of talked about this already with the mower, the lift, um, and the truck, just in the new equipment, but we've also have those in the host, so, uh, wherever you wanna put those. Um, rolling down to the pool fund, you can kind of see there too, that's where I have the dollar raise, but everything else is pretty much a standard. We, we've stayed somehow in, in the same budget for fifteen years since I've been here. We haven't really changed much. Yeah, I mean, we haven't really hired anyone except for the, from the non-reverting account, a lot of part-time people. So that's pretty much the two-on-four. Uh, three-on-six, uh, non-reverting fund. Uh, incomes, I am down a little bit on my incomes for the fitness center. I think I'm probably only gonna be at like two-hundred, but hopefully COVID goes away and I trend back up to my two-twenty-five. Uh, I'm not really worried that much about it because we also have a community engagement person now, so now we can market. We've never marketed before. We only bought DAC shirts. And that was successful, but now it's time to take it to the next level. And that's, that's really partially why I was so, you know, after that position, because it's a dual role. It should generate money as much as it, um, you know, markets the town as well. The park impact fees, um, that's doing great. Thank you Barry on that one. Park impact fees, thank you. So we're, we're pushing forward on those. Those are trending up as well, um, with the seventy thousand. I think we may even hit that seventy thousand this year as well. And so we're just saving up. We have some ideas to possibly, um, connect Aiken Park and Ellis Park. We have a trail. It's kind of primitive right now uh, through the woods, so we're, we're looking at possible ways to, to connect those. Yeah. It's not for the faint of heart or a stroller, for sure. And we've been looking at ways, uh, we'll probably have to have it engineered, but doing some sort of switchback up there because it's great looping to have it, especially with the water plant going in. It may be a little nicer, um, trip around than to go all the way around the water plant as well. Um, Blanton House rental income, that one is actually trending down and it is because of the COVID, people switching stuff around. Everybody's like, I can get married at my grandma's farm or something, you know? And, uh, I'm hoping that changes, but right now they book eighteen months out, so my, my yuck is, you know, eighteen months from today. It's not just today, because they're making decisions today, eighteen months out, so. But it's okay, we'll be tight with that. I think projects-wise, we'll just cut back. I gotta finish the gutters on the one side of the Blanton House cause we did the other side, but I will just kind of dial it back and stick to the, you know, the nuts and bolts on that one. Um, rec program income, that one got killed by COVID as well. Um, it's almost, that one's actually twenty-five is, is my quest. That's one I wanna make a change on there. I think I have forty-five on your guys' sheet. So I wanna send that over to, to Jenny. But, um, just bringing that one down, so I'm more in line with what I think we're, we're gonna be. It's gonna be another year before programs really catch back up because we're just not getting the, the attendance and the registration that we used to. Um, but, you know, we're still, we're still trying new things and, and trying to put stuff out there, so we got a bunch of cool programs coming up too, which I can probably share in the next month or two with you guys. Uh, winterland income, wow, winterland was crazy last year. The best year we've ever had by a third. Uh, so we're kind of plan, planning for that. We got a new tunnel and then we're also talking about doing a wa, a walkable area. But I'm pretty short-staffed right now, so we're, it's, it's in limbo unless I can get a major sponsor. So, um, we're still looking at that one, but I, I am gonna be spending some money in there, just not as much as, as normal. And then expenses running down, uh, community engagement, we added that one in. That's just for that change there. Um, we are working on, uh, upgrading the locker rooms at the DAC. Pretty important one. This is another ADA function that we wanna do is they're, I mean, they're straight out of the seventies. You know, low ceiling, you know, friend shower with multiple heads, not today's society. So we're looking to go back to the stalls and where you can have a separate compartment where you can get dressed and stuff like that. And then adding multiple toilets, cause right now you like rest your head on the wall and use the restroom, so.
On-demand hot water?
Yes, that, that's another one that's on there too, and I'm hoping my buddy there in the back room will help me take care of that one. I see him sweating. But yeah, that is a, a major component of that as well. I think when we move that air handler, which he has on the list to do, September, October-ish. Um, once we do that, we can kind of fix a lot of those things that go with it and we'll finish our remodel. And with that too, is an office area for Madison, so kind of updating that whole area and a little conference room, um, on there. Most of the stuff we're doing in-house, besides the anything that needs a code improvement, so. Um, trail projects, we already kind of talked about that. Blanton House, staying slim on that one. Rec, you know, we'll keep the expenses down just on the programs that we have. We're doing a lot of partnerships actually in the rec programs. We're kind of outsourcing, outsourcing stuff. We've got a Let's Go Sports. We're teaming up with them. They give us five bucks for marketing per person and they do all kinds of sports stuff. We've had really good success with that. Pickleball's going crazy too. Everything we put out there with pickleball is like gold. Just, it sells out. I mean, we have, uh, actually today, we have a intro to pickleball and we have eighteen signed up for it. So, and we only had twelve spots, so.
Will, uh, earlier on, you had indicated, it looked like it said some, like gifting two more pickleball courts?
Yeah, so in the donations, um, account, I actually got that a lot earlier than I was, so this is still kind of top secret, but I did get the funds to, uh, add two more pickleball courts and, and remove the singles court on the one side. Um, it is being used heavily, so I think it is something that we're gonna do. We're also gonna fix some gates and layouts and add a sidewalk in there as well. And I have all the funds to do all of that. I may do it this year when we close down, but I'll be coming to you guys and asking if I can once we get there, uh, just because it, it is heavily used. Um, they, every time you give them something, they want more.
If we, if we become a pickleball mecca, I don't know if that would be a bad thing.
Yeah, it, it is a really good thing, you know, and some of this, and they're actually generating some revenue on their own. They're running tournaments and we're doing a swap. We're giving them free, um, space as long as they generate dollars towards the funds to fix up the area. So we may have LED lights eventually too and, and a couple of other things.
How many pickleball courts can we put inside the train station?
Probably only one, maybe only one. It'd be really echoey in there too.
What if, what if, what if we built onto that?
Onto the train station? Yeah, you probably could, probably could.
Okay, just checking, just idea.
Yeah. And there's a, a winner demand for pickleball as well, cause they're in the DAC every Monday. There's a pretty good following with that as well. Um, trails, uh, purchase and displays, we already talked about that, so pretty much three-on-six is done. Next is, do you guys have on your list four-forty-nine or four-on-one?
Four-on-one.
So four-on-one's the donations. We pretty much just talked about that one as well. Um, and I did get those funds this year, so this will kind of be obsolete, but they are still bringing in funds, so I think I would keep with that ten grand to try to get those LED lights. And then food and bev, um, same thing. We talked about that. I really wanna use that money towards grants and trail design. Uh, we are currently working on that Sycamore project like I talked about in the last council meeting. Uh, hopefully have, uh, sit-down pow-wow with the neighbors and figure out where we are with that, but hopefully that one will be done this year. Um, and then all this can be just focused on that bigger trail. Um, and that, I think that's gonna like change the landscape of the entry to Danville as well. I mean, it's gonna be really cool.
Will, any additional cost for the, um, uh, moving the Little League fields up to, um, Gary Aiken?
So.
Anything that we're gonna need to account for in twenty-twenty-two?
I'm meeting with two contractors and I'm hoping to get some in-kind, uh, deals there, but I'll really be able to find out once we get to that point. The biggest thing for me is we gotta start thinking about baseball now, you know, cause we are losing that one field. They're probably gonna be without a field for at least one season. I sat, actually sat down with Pee Wee today and, you know, they, they are growing as well. So we have six fields now, but it's almost not enough for them. Um, but that's a hard, hard thing to do when they're only there for, you know, three months out of the year. So we just gotta figure out maybe some more multi-use areas. Uh, we also talked about reaching out to Westbridge, cause they have a lot of property out there and, and maybe we could deal a backstop. You know, like, hey, we'll put the backstop. If you let us, um, rent it, you know, use the, book it for you so that our league's gonna have guaranteed. it for you so that our league's going to have guaranteed times. They may not be able to play games out there, but at least practices. I mean, that would alleviate so much just in Ellis Park by taking, you know, a couple of practices out. I mean, it would help a lot. So. We've been thinking about it. It's just, that's a hard one too. I recently just went over to Plainfield's. My daughter was playing softball on their Little League fields. You got to go over there. It's amazing. I mean, that's what $2.5 million will get you. But, you know, could we do something similar, you know, for probably half, if maybe three quarters, you know? I think we probably could. It's just a matter of land, you know? We got to, we got to start thinking a little bit more like Ellis Park is full. We got to put some stuff somewhere else so that we don't create this problem that we're having right now, which is everyone's coming to Ellis Park. You know, even Austin, when he was doing his survey, he said, you don't have Danville Parks and Rec, you have Ellis Park. You know, no one knows Danville Parks. They know Ellis Park, you know, and they refer everything to Ellis Park, which is not a bad thing because that's how we grew up, you know? It's kind of like the public works thing, you know, they're public works, but all of that is starting to go to other spaces, you know, and they're looking at more of a, a street department now, you know, going back to the roots. You know, it's kind of the same thing with us, you know, just that growth, it's, it's part of it and us branding some of that. I think that's a majority of what I had. Yeah. And I didn't do a PowerPoint, which was asked by Rob.
He's not listening. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
2% for non, for not having a PowerPoint.
Yeah, exactly. I did actually make a movie and I'll show you guys that later. That'd be next year.
Threat Level Midnight?
So any other questions or?
I'd just like to say the park is wonderful, vibrant. Every time I go through there, people are everywhere. They love it.
Yeah.
It's really good that we ended up with Aiken Park.
I know. It's interesting when we did the surveys, you know, what you thought about Aiken Park prior is completely different. You know, it's the number two use facility that we have. Yeah. Which is kind of crazy to think about it, but they like the open space, you know, being able to walk and see everything and do a lap around there, you know? It's just kind of nice.
It's wonderful.
So, thank you. I mean, without you guys, you know, looking towards parks, wouldn't have any of that. So.
Anything else, guys, that is? Okay. Thank you very much, Will.
Thank you.
Mr. President, council members, I'm going to try to be quick and try to catch us back up here. I did have a PowerPoint, but I'm going to skip that and we'll go through the highlights and.
Excellent, excellent.
Answer some questions and hopefully get you guys back on track. So this year I am asking for one additional police officer. In the packet that I did provide you, you can see the staffing plan. Basically the numbers are 1.7 officers per thousand residents. I kind of broke down the other towns. You see where they're at population wise, how many officers they have. So we're currently right in line with all the other departments in this, in this county, in this area at 1.7. And we have 18 current officers for an estimated population of 10,444, or 49. The next page you'll see, and I stole this from the Parks Department, they did a good job of, they paid some company to come out and do an estimate of the population for the next 10 years. So using their estimated population guide that they paid for, I kind of show you guys on this next page there where we're kind of, as we grow, where we need to grow as a police department. So this is kind of a 10-year plan of where I'm at and where I'm thinking we need to be to stay in that 1.7 range per officer per thousand residents. And we get that number because I know somebody's going to ask me later. So basically you take the number of officers divided by the population and then you multiply by 1,000 and it'll give you your number. So our estimated population for 2022 is 10,694. That's where I come up with, I needed additional officer to make 19. We did make cutbacks last year. We gave back 10%. I think my, my part was close to $30,000. We did have 19 police officers and then we cut back last year, went back to 18. So I'm basically trying to get back to where we were before we lost the school resource officer. And the next page was, Will, study. Just to give you an example of our staffing plan for the road, our road officers right now, night shift has four officers per squad, day shift has two or three officers per squad. Our minimum staffing is to have two officers out on the road at all times. Basically these guys work half the year. They're, they're on or they're off. They work in a 28-day cycle. They'll work 14 days. So with that being said, the next page, two officers per shift is my minimum staffing. You kind of, I kind of break down the town's benefit package that we have. I have one officer, for example, has 200 hours of vacation. He's only working 180 days already. So you take his vacation plus his sick time, his holiday time, which varies year to year. I mean, these guys, it's another reason why I need additional staffing just to meet my minimal staffing. No longer these guys are here with the department, which is a good thing to keep them and retain them, but they, they acquire more and more time off. So as we go forward, they're going to have more people with more time off. So therefore I need more officers just to meet the minimum staffing. I've seen a FMLA be used a couple of times. The new, new thing is for even my male officers, they like to take FMLA and be home with their wife after they have a baby. They can take up to 12 weeks a year. There's nothing I can do about it, but it does hurt my staffing levels. And we've had some long-term injuries as well that hurt my staffing levels the last couple of years. The next page, just, just let you guys know kind of what we go through when we hire somebody, why I'd like to get started with a hiring process. I plan on going to the merit board in September, our next merit board meeting and try to create a new hiring list. We're supposed to maintain a hiring list. We currently have two people on it. I called the young man the other day. One is no longer wants to be a police officer. I don't know, I'm sure it's with what's going on in the world. The other guy has a pacemaker and went in front of the local perf board and they turned him down. So I'm going to try to go ahead and get a hiring process going just so we can make a list. And if you guys do authorize me to have a 19th officer, that we already have a process started. The hiring process takes a long time. Last one we had was in April 2020. We took applications. After the whole hiring process was done, we actually put them on the payroll in November 2020 after field training in the academy. It was August the 21 before there's actually any good to me staffing wise. That's when they was released to be on their own. So it's a lengthy process. The next page shows you kind of what our hiring process entails. It takes a long time to get through all this to find the best of the best. Last time we ended up with four good applicants. The merit board selected two. All four of them had bachelor degrees and one had the academy as well. So truly to get to the best of the best, this, this list of things you see up there, I guess you don't see it there, but if you're following along on the page, it takes a long time to get there. The next page is just talking about these officers working with other people in the county. We do a lot of multi-jurisdictional training with other agencies and these guys all talk to each other. So they know what each other makes. They know if they get extra pay for this, extra pay for that, if they get extra whatever. So I would just ask that we try to keep up somewhat similar. I know we're not apples to apples, Plainfield, Brownsburg, Avon, but we need to say somewhat similar, close to them as we possibly can. So we don't lose good officers. I don't know if Rob talked about that. I missed his thing, but we're seeing a trend in public safety where agencies are stealing each other's officers and firefighters. They're doing lateral hires and the younger millennial type individuals that we got working for us, they see dollar signs and for $5,000 more, they'll jump ship from here and go somewhere else. So that's why it's important for us to stay competitive with the other The next page, we're talking about our retirement. This is kind of what I really wanted to hit on tonight. For those of you who don't know how our retirement system works, after 20 years of service, we get 50% of the highest non-promoted salary of an officer. So just for an example, let's say that we make, by the time I retire, let's say we're making $60,000. After 20 years of service, I would get $30,000. That's all I get. As you see the other towns use longevity pay as well, we're the only town in this area that does not have longevity pay. The way the perf retirement is set up, we take the base pay, which let's, let's take an example, 60,000, let's say that's our new base pay. If I had a longevity pay of $2,000, that would be added to that. We would have $62,000. So at the end of the day, it would help our retirement. I talked to Mr. Van Leer about this and he, he probably suggested I shouldn't retire, that I should probably keep working or find another part-time job.
Part-time job.
Yeah. $30,000 is not a lot of money to live on after working 20 years in this job, but that is how our retirement system is set up.
And, and one of the things that I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just want the council to know that if you go under the budget worksheet that was supplied by the clerk treasurer, you'll notice that there's not very much, if any, monies going into their social security. Because with perf 77, it, unless Chief or any of the other police officers had worked in a, in a other career or position not covered by perf 77, then they would be eligible for probably a small social security benefit. But under perf 77, they are not entitled to any, any social security benefit. So.
So when, he retires at 65, say he retired at 55 and you're eligible for social security. Yeah, take that.
So if, and if you don't mind if I share some of our conversation.
You do better than me, yeah.
So because Chief had worked for either a corporation or some other type of employment before working for, in the police force, he had earned credits in social security. Okay? He has spent most of his career in, you know, public safety and covered under perf 77. So that means when he joined perf 77, he stopped paying into social security. Okay? So, so anything that he would accrue under social security benefits were from previous employment and have since stopped because he's not feeding into that system any longer.
I understand.
So every officer, not just Jim, every officer who is part of perf 77 does not pay into social security benefits. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we have maybe one or two officers that are actually still on civilian perf?
I think we still have two that are on civilian perf and then everybody else that we've hired since then is all on perf 77.
Okay. So, so therefore going that social security benefit for half of what a starting officer's wage is. And Jim, as that wage goes up over time, wouldn't it be fair to say that your retirement benefits would also increase as that, as that position increases?
Mr. Morgan might be able to help me out on this one. I'm thinking, don't we get locked in once you retire at that wage?
Unless, unless the town or the pension would have a, like a cost of living increase, which 77 does not as far as I know, then once, once you retire, whatever the base pay is, that's where you're at.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I, I thought I had read something somewhere that as that, what's the word that you guys use? Unpromoted?
The highest non-promoted.
Non-promoted. Yeah. I thought that as, as that goes up, I thought in the future that pension went up. So, but I probably am incorrect on that.
So do you like perf 77 or would you rather go with social security?
Perf 77 is a good retirement. I mean, you could do 20 years and be done. It's, we really don't have a choice. I mean, almost all city police departments in the state of Indiana, that's a decent sized town have went to this. This is truly, and fire departments, all your fire departments are on the same retirement system. So we really don't have an option to go back and forth. I mean, we're, we're kind of, this is what we have.
This pension is far better than the civilian pension. Far better.
I looked into it and it's, it is better. It's, really social security isn't much more than half.
And we cannot legally go back once we joined unless we were to dissolve the town of Danville. I mean, that is truly the only way out of it. Other communities, other communities have tried to sue to get out and according to the state of Indiana and the legislature, the only way to get out of this pension program is to again dissolve the town.
And what year was it that that switchover happened for the perf 77?
76.
No, that's when, that's when it was created, but.
Seven, eight.
It's, it's been probably eight years or so, maybe 10 years.
I was going to say, I mean, it's been during my tenure of while I've been in town. So I just couldn't remember what year it was.
What it was. I guess I can't.
My, my records show 2008.
I was guessing eight or seven.
That sounds about right. We'll pass the hat for you.
Basically this year I am asking for longevity. I did a, it's a hundred dollars, what I'm asking for is a hundred dollars a year per officer. So at the end of their anniversary, for year one, they'd get a hundred dollars at their anniversary check. The two years is 200, three years, 300. So it's not a lot of money that they're going to see in their pocket every year. But what it really does truly helps their retirement out. And that's what I'm trying to do here is just help the retirement by adding $2,000. So like Jerry Cunningham's been here forever. So he would be maxed out. He would get a check for $2,000 at his annual every year. That's the most he would ever get. But when he goes to retire, it would help his retirement. So, but that's kind of where I'm at on longevity. And as you can see the other communities, I mean, Brownsburg's given $8,000 a year, Plainfield 3,000, Avon's got 2,000, we're at zero. Our base pay is also the lowest out of all the, in, in the county. Like I said, it's not truly apples to apples, but we need to be somewhat closer to recruit and retention of our officers.
Hey, real quick.
Yep.
What is a fresh off the, out of the academy deputy on the sheriff's department? What's his, do you know that? Just because they're right here in our backyard.
You're on the merit board now. It's, it's in the 50s and I know that they got a nice bump. A road officer is probably making 65, close to 65 to be a road guy. The next page, I also this year I'll be asking for FTO pay. So our field training officers train all our new officers. And as, doing a survey of all these other employers in the county here, Plainfield, Avon, Brownsburg, even the sheriff's department, when they're actually training a new officer, they're compensated. And I've talked to Mr. Lee, our attorney for the town, and he believes a dollar 25 per hour while training a new officer would be a good, good starting point. So for an example, if I was training one of you for two week pay period, I would get an extra hundred dollars of pay for that two weeks. So it's not a lot of money. It's, it's truly not. I'm asking for $2,000 basically for, for the whole year. I mean, we really only train like one or two people a year usually. In the grand scheme of things, it's not a lot, but it makes the field trained officer feel more appreciated for their extra work. It is a lot of extra work. I was a field trained officer for years and you've got a brand new person with you for a long time and you're basically teaching them everything there is to know about the job. And you've got to watch them and everything they do, plus the bad guys. So it's just something that, to try to offer to keep these guys incentivized to want to do this job and want to help out the new officers. Mr. Morgan will tell you, and I, I did it for years for no extras. I'm sure he did it for years for no extra. It's just, it's a different kind of employee that we have these days. They'd like to see, you know, I always hear, well, Plainfield gets this or Avon gets this. So I'm just trying to keep up a little bit with the other towns. And it's not a lot that I'm asking for, but I did ask for it. And I think Jenny did build that into my salary and wages. So you will see an increase in salary and wages just for that. Also Donna Edwards will probably be retiring next year. So when she does retire, I'll be coming to you to ask to split her position to a part-time position. She wants to stay on part-time. This will save the town money for insurance and benefits and I'll still just take the wages and split them. And I don't know what the benefits package costs, but I'm sure it'll save us some money. So just.
How long has Donna been there?
Donna's been with the town 30 some years.
Yes.
Wow.
So I'm going to try to keep her on part-time as long as I can to keep that knowledge around while I'm training somebody else to try to take over her job. We're also probably going to retire Officer Settlemore and Officer Rout within the next three years, Sergeant Rout in the next three years. So just letting you know, in the next couple of years, we've got some retirements coming up. So I'm looking towards the long-term as well.
Along those lines, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Jim, but along those lines, Brenda and I ran a report yesterday and with the town of Danville, we only have nine employees that have been here 10-plus years anymore. Because a lot of people are starting to retire and I think that says a lot. You know, we have over 80 employees and only nine of them have been here 10-plus years. Go ahead, Jim. I'm sorry. I just wanted.
No, no, that's, that's.
While we're on that subject, I want to throw that in.
I think I got most of them. It's over that period.
Yeah.
You really do.
Yeah. The next couple of pages I won't bore you with really. It's just a capital improvement plan. I just, in the future, this is kind of my tenure plan. I want to look at different ways to purchase some vehicles in the future. When we bond, we usually lose about $40,000, which is a vehicle. I have a meeting tomorrow with Enterprise Rental Car. This town of Lebanon's using them for all their police vehicles. We'll see if it's a viable option just so maybe we could do something a little different and maybe save some money. So just to let you know that I'm looking at other ways. I know I've talked to Avon's police chief. They use either their C- to Avon's police chief. They use either their CCD or CCI. I forget which one. But they budget for it out, out of that fund, and that they pay for their vehicles that way. So just coming to you in the next couple of years, like I said, this is kind of a tenure plan. I'm looking at maybe doing something differently, just having in your mind, in the back of your mind for later. It's kind of an internal thing for me. I'll be doing this internally. I'm gonna inventory all my assets and try to identify the life expectancy and kind of replacement costs. Again, this is part of my tenure plan. That way I just kind of, more for me than it is you. That way I have a plan on what I need in the future. My training budget will be taking a big hit this year. So law enforcement continuing education's what we use to pay for all our training. And it's usually funded by gun permits. We average about $6,000 a year. This year, we were on track to maybe make up to $10,000 because of all the COVID stuff and all the gun talks. We had a lot of money coming in. The state of Indiana has ended the gun permit fee, so now your gun permits are free, and we don't get no income. So bad timing for that, for us. So this is a fund that I gotta try to find somewhere to make up some money for our law enforcement continuing ed. The state mandates that every one of us have 24 hours of training per year. We have several of us that are training officers, instructors, and have some specialty training that requires extra training. So this is something we gotta find a way to fund somehow. So I just wanted to keep that in your guys' mind, that I did lose out on $6,000 on that. I did ask for a new line item this year, technology line item, kind of what Will was talking about. I'm kind of on board with what he's saying. If we can get a line item just for technology, it'll help me track where the spending's going, where we're at. It might not be a, a great thing right now, but I think as we go forward, like he's wanting to do in his 10-year plan, five-year plan he's talking about, I think that's where the town's gonna move eventually. So I've asked to have a new line item just so I can easily track the spending on technology. We do spend a lot of money in the police department for this. We're gonna try to get with this, this new camera system, the flock cameras. It's really neat. They track every vehicle that goes through an intersection, runs their plates, tells you who they, if they're suspended, wanted, sex offender, I mean, all kinds of neat stuff. I can go back in time and say, hey, I'm looking for a white van that could be used in a robbery. It'll go back and tell me that there was 25 white vans that went through this intersection. Here they are. Here's the plates. So it's, it's a neat tool. All the other agencies in the county have already purchased two to five of these or more. So this is something, again, I'm just trying to keep up with everybody else as we go forward. So that kind of goes along with that. I think that covers all my new increases. The only other increase I had was my part-time wages. I increased it $5,000. And I'm seeing that we've used a lot of that this year just to cover shifts and different events that the town puts on. I'll take any questions that you guys have.
I do.
Thank you.
I do. I have a question.
Sorry.
Sorry.
So you're, these numbers are good, actually, to see how the other towns are doing, what they're doing, and then how much you need per population. Do we have the census numbers for Danville yet?
We do not.
Okay.
I checked this afternoon. I plan to send you guys the link tomorrow where we all can be checking. It depends on who you ask when we will get those.
Okay.
But they are not, they have not been released yet.
Okay. So you have eight, the 18 that we have now, does that include the three volunteer officers?
No, it does not. That's full-time paid employees.
And how many of those 18 are patrol officers that would actually drive the streets and all that?
14.
14, okay. Are you getting the help that you anticipated from the volunteers? Are they pretty consistent with their?
I have two still in training, so it's yet to be determined. The one that's out of training, Officer Corey Kaler, has put in a lot of hours for me. So.
Okay.
He's working out for us. I mean, for the, for the volunteer hours. The other two's yet to be determined.
Okay. And I just, this, I guess somewhat on the topic, but I had, I had a, like a big events that we have, and I know we have a lot of them. I'm wondering if we could start looking at maybe having a little more police presence. I guess for no other reason, well, two reasons. One is just traffic in case, you know, things get crazy. Anytime you have concert goers and alcohol, things could go awry. So I, I don't know. I know I, there was one weekend, there was a bunch of stuff going on. I think we only had one or two officers on duty. I, I would just like to see if we can maybe beef things up on, I know it's Friday and Saturday night and all that, but I, I want to see if we can maybe beef that up. But if it's not, if we find it's not necessary, then fine. But just something to think about.
And the night you were talking about, you had called me and we had talked about that.
Yeah.
I only had two on, and they was on a two-person run that was tied up. That.
Sure.
I know what night you're talking about.
Yeah. So, anyway.
When we're at minimum staffing, which we are a lot of times on the weekends, just because everybody does want a weekend to go vacation or do whatever they do, especially in the summer, that's what we're faced with, is we only have two people for the whole town a lot of times. So.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Good job.
Thank you, Jim.
Sorry if I took too long.
No, it's okay. I thought you were gonna get up and give a speech, Chris.
So, my budget really isn't changing that much. You will see that my only request is, I have a part-time utility coordinator that is paid fully from the utilities budget, water, wastewater, and stormwater pays her salary. I'm requesting that her salary range be changed from $15 to $18 and 18 cents an hour. That matches the full-time utility coordinator's position. And I'm sorry, I'm behind tab number 11. I should have said that. I'm requesting that that be increased. It doesn't affect any of the budgets except the utilities, and there's sufficient funds there, just to allow me to give her raises based upon her performance and to match what the full-time position already is set at. I would also like to increase the accounts payable deputy's salary to $20.62 to $24 an hour. This puts a position in line with how the other administrative staff is paid within the town of Danville. That would match the salary range. I'm also adding responsibilities to her job. I would like to change her title to, I'm an office manager. With the anticipated growth, I'm looking at going the same way that the utility department heads are going to where she would oversee the front office utility coordinator. She would be the point of contact. She already is with, without the money and the title. So it's just to bring my office and my staff in line, like I said, with the rest of the town administrations and to keep, increase her responsibilities and pay to, to match that. Matt, Tony, Barry and I met this week. We're, we're going to start increasing office meetings that we have. We've got some plans in place in anticipation of the growth and, so that we're all continuously on the same page. So that really, my other budget items, I am asking them just to say the same. I don't need to make any changes. I presented as part of the non-departmental budget last week, some requests that I had for professional services within those line items. And so I don't have any other changes to the utilities or the general fund.
So I just had a quick question about wages, and you asking to increase a couple of wages.
Yes.
So how is the, is that increase in wages accounted for as we're also discussing possible raises across the board?
So the raises across the board would be on top of what I'm asking for. So.
So it's possible for somebody to get a $4 an hour raise, and then another hypothetically 3% on top of that?
Yes, you're exactly correct. But what I am proposing to you guys is a salary range. I'm not saying, and I will not, put the people at the very top of the range. I would just like leniency. I do performance evaluations with my employees, and I would just like some room based upon their performance that I can give them raises and as I add additional responsibilities, like I said. So anything that the council passes would be on top of what I'm proposing here.
Any other questions for Jenny? Thank you very, Jenny. Thank you there, Jenny. Mark.
Jenny, should I be addressing the council budget at this point, or do, would you?
Yes. I was going to ask you to do that.
On the council budget, which is the tab prior to the clerk treasurer's, I think it's, is it 10? Is that correct? Okay. The only changes that have been requested is salary raises for the council for a calendar year. It's been suggested that the council president receives 12,000, council vice president 11,000, and council members receive 10,000. That's the only increases I have for council budget. And then on my budget, I have no request for any increases. And would you like me to bring up the utility director at this time?
Yes, please.
Can I make a quick comment?
Would you please?
Guys, don't hate me. I don't think now's a good time to be giving us raises. We're trying to, you know, look at other people's budgets, and, and yes, we're not very well-paid considering some of the stuff we have to do. But I just want to, before we agree to that, I want to make sure we're really thinking that through and the optics and everything, especially with what's happened this year. And it's not just an optics thing, you know, we, you know, it's just sometimes not always good to give yourself a raise when you're sitting in office. So just my thought.
Mr. Morgan?
Sorry.
Sir?
Not that I'm an advocate for raises or, or against them. Typically, isn't it, if council income does increase, that it doesn't increase those that vote for it, that instead it takes place with a new term?
I have never been town manager when that's occurred.
All right.
So I have.
I bet, I bet what you can do it however we want.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I have no clue.
I don't think so, because I think when we came on, that was the first year at our current rate. And Tom and Chris were on there before. So no, I don't think it, and with staggered terms, it wouldn't.
I was just curious, honestly.
I'm sorry, I can't answer your question. At least I was honest about it.
Thank you, Mark. Very good presentation.
Thank you for the lasagna, too.
Shall we wait? Okay.
I found one sweeter than the other one.
That would be Mark's.
Is it really? Okay. Well, that would make, make total sense.
Yours was good, too.
We're not agreeing that you are sweeter than Lisa by any means.
There is no way.
No, 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 no.
That I would even try. So this kind of falls outside of my budget, but it falls inside of my direction. We talked to you, we've talked a couple of times during budgeting processes, about the possibility of a utilities director. And as you can see from the description, what I'm looking for in a utilities director is someone who would be a point of contact for all of the development that we have, so that developers aren't trying to chase down four superintendents. And this way, they have one point of contact, then that point of contact can then spread out and, and contact the department heads as needed. I have been asked, I intend to, probably by the end of this week or the first and next, go ahead and advertise for a wastewater superintendent, once we get this determined, obviously. The, this position would be a current superintendent. And it would be just like what we've done with, with Will, where Will was paid an additional dollar amount to become the assistant town manager. He's still the park director. I did say director. So what we're looking at in this position would be, is that a superintendent can still hold their current position, whatever field applies for it, but they would receive a stipend of $3,500. We, we pay Will 7,000. We feel like this is an in-between position that could afford 3,500. As Andy said, we met with the utilities this morning. It would have been about $1,000 per utility. They were in agreement of paying that, and then Andy came up with the fact that it could come out of one of his accounts, and he's agreed to pay that entire $3,500. So that takes the burden off of the utilities.
Out of the MTH restricted people.
Right. Well, like I said, it's, to make sure there's no confusion, the way Will and I work, Will is clearly the assistant town manager, but I don't make the department heads go through him. We know municipalities that do that, we are not that way. We, we work hand in hand and side by side. We think it's a good fit. Will is there when I'm not here and does a great job. But I don't prohibit the department heads from talking to me just because we have an assistant superintendent, or assistant town manager. This position would be no different. The utilities would not be prohibited in speaking with me. We would probably still manage the same way. I don't see any reason to change how we're directing this. It's just an added layer, again, more based on efficiency. And that's all we're looking for in this position. So, did I entertain any questions?
How do you decide which department head to make, to have fill this position?
They can all apply, just like Will did. I had another superintendent apply at the same time Will did. And then what we'll do is we'll look and see what's the best fit for the program, who probably meets overall needs, that can, best fit, I guess, this job description.
So will you wait to go this direction once you've made a decision on wastewater?
I think it's the only fair thing to do, to be honest with you.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. It's a very good presentation, Mark.
Thank you, sir.
Best one all night? Yeah. So you and Jenny are winning. I know who's in last place.
Good evening. I just have a couple of things.
Slap happy, slap happy here.
Can you guys be quiet, please?
Slap happy. The only thing I have is I'm requesting an increase in advertising and printing currently from the whopping $75 to 500. And office supplies from 100 to 750. Reason for that being the supplies, you know, as you recall, we got the large format printer, and I anticipate, you know, getting paper and toner and stuff like that. And just in the increase of developments needing, you know, additional supplies. And then the, on the printing and advertising, we've just had a lot of annexations, and it's really taken up the budget for the advertising. So that's the reason for the increase in that. And then I do have one other thing that I would like to request, just planning for future growth, and I know that we're gonna be getting really busy here in the next year or two, is a part-time planner, just to kind of help out with day-to-day operations, you know, giving zoning information or minutes. I've got a whole list of things. There's a lot of things that, responsibilities that fall under my position that you don't even think about, sign permits, GIS, updating the layers, zoning and everything. So there's a lot going on, and I think it would be to our advantage to have an assistant planner. Or, that's it? Do you have any questions?
I, I just have a comment. We should start having everyone ask for their increases by percentage, because your printing.
Yeah, that's.
100% increases.
I know. I, hey.
No.
We can back it down. But, yeah, it, it's, it's not very much, so.
There really is no logic as to why it was at the rate it was. I mean, we can't, we can't even figure it out.
Maybe in 1982.
To me, it's like, why even, you know, $75, why even bother, really?
What was that called, a stinner?
Paper and it's gone.
Yeah.
Hey, Lisa, do you outsource your printing and advertising?
Or like business cards, things like that?
Yeah.
Yes. Now, we, we do like our own letterhead and stuff like that.
That's what I figured.
Yeah, we do our own letterhead, but envelopes and things like that, we've outsourced.
Well, I've just, the reason I ask is I've been.
I've been in a few conversations.
Getting some work done by Sycamore Printing lately, and they've been really good.
Yeah, we, that's.
Very, very reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you. Very good presentation. Thank you. So, it looks like stormwater.
Barry, it's warm in here.
While, while he makes his way up, I'd like to sing his, I'd like to sing his praises to all of you. There was a very distinct possibility that we were not going to have this in here tonight. At 9 o'clock last night, was it? to all of you. There was a very distinct possibility that we were not going to have this in here tonight. At nine o'clock last night, was it 10 o'clock? Okay. Barry texts me and said, the chillers have gone down. Everything's done. And temperatures were rising, and Barry was off yesterday. And I want to make sure that everybody knows that Barry was off on a day off, and he came in, contacted train, train to come in, they came in, they worked on it. I know you left here probably about 10:00, 10:30, because that's the last, that's when I last text I got from him was 10:30.
Add a half hour.
And he's milking it at this point. But, yeah, yeah, exactly. We have cameras, so don't try. But, 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 but he left at 10, at 11 o'clock and made sure that we had air in this room for tonight's meeting because there was a possibility that we may have had to move to the train station, which I know Mr. Pato would have been thrilled about with the echo in that room. Yeah.
I can't hear a thing there.
Thanks, Barry. I was looking out for everybody because the last thing I thought to myself was, no air conditioning, everybody's coming up here requesting budgets. I thought that'd be a nightmare, so I stayed here and made sure.
We've been a short budget presentation. No, I mean, never mind.
This one's gonna be short?
So I, I know you said you wanted last year's budget. I gave that to you, but I have chicken scratches on here. You can read them.
I can just get clean stuff later from everybody and from Jenny.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Barry, for fixing my air conditioning.
Barry, thank you for doing your job.
That's what I do.
Oh, you have two now.
Oh, yeah, this is what.
You're a good man, Barry.
I came to Jenny with a late change.
Thank you.
Those are stormwater. I assume I'm up here for building, so you're getting those in advance. The building part of this is pretty small. There are some increases. Let me get to that. But most of them are basically office supplies and equipment for the new employee, which the new employee's been awesome. I appreciate that. It's really taken, starting to take a little bit of weight off of my shoulders, and I think it's going to be a good employee as far as helping us out. Let me get to. Thought these binders were a good idea, but they're hard to manage up here. Yeah, so the training increase is $1,000 from 1,000, so it's 2,000, 250 in office supplies, and then $200 on new equipment. Basically, it's for like stuff like smoke, when you test the smoke alarms and their booties when you go into a new house, if you got mud on your feet, things like that. So that's the only thing I have on the building side of it.
Questions?
That's it?
That's it.
Well, thank you, Barry.
You said you wanted fast.
So where is Barry? Where's the real Barry?
Well, he's, he's not done. He's only got, he's only hit you for about half of what his presentation is of that.
Stormwater.
Yeah, he's got stormwater to go for as well.
Oh, we're not done.
Building.
Now, before we start on utilities, because that's where we're going next, I just, you guys have a lot of difficult decisions to make here the next two weeks, and every department head has requested to increase their budget substantially. And if you follow along the timeline, you know, every year, Tom, Chris, you're used to this, we've got to move pretty quickly. So David had brought up earlier for each department head to do an Excel spreadsheet or something to compare the last couple of years' budgets to your requests this year. I would ask that if your schedule allows to get that done, maybe by Monday, if that's fair. And then don't hesitate to reach out to myself, my staff, and the department heads the next week for anything. We'll all be working a lot of hours to make this make sense. I am almost finished with the revenues. I'm having our financial advisor look over them to make sure that they agree with everything we do. After they have approved them, I'll get them emailed out to you guys probably at the latest Friday evening. And then Monday, Tuesday, we'll start building our cash reserve reports so that you can see where we'll be with percentage of raises and, and those factors. So it's, it's really, really hard the next two to three weeks because, you know, I have to talk individually to each of you or talk to you two at a time, and it's hard to build a consensus. But I, we'll have a work study again Wednesday night, a week from tonight, and I do just really need to get an idea of breaking down each department and what you guys want to do. And I know it's really, really tough decisions on what route you're going to go because everybody has very significant requests. But I just wanted to say all that before we start on utilities, because they're kind of their own corporate private account, you know, they're not based on any property taxes or anything, and they are not regulated the same way with the department, local government, Nance, and State Board of Accounts. They, as long as their revenue's building and their expenditures are staying below the revenue, their budgets are passed. So I just, before we move forward, I just wanted to say that. And again, I know you guys don't hesitate to ask me questions, and everybody's been fantastic about meeting with myself and my staff and the department head. So just wanted to add that. Thank you, Barry. Go ahead. We'll start utilities for the night.
We got one other thing, and it's up on the screen right now, Barry, the C C I. Did you have a request on C C I?
Yes, I did. Should be, it's in the notes right there. For the rental space upstairs, what we're trying to do is, is cut the cost off of the host fund. And part of the way to do that is when we rent space, we take part of that money and we maintain the building. It's as simple as that. So that's the request. I think it's $14,000 that we earn in revenue, close to that every year from what we have currently. And I was requesting six to go back into C C I. That'll also help offset gun permits, which the police department lost, and that'll help them out. They can pull money out of there to do that. So it was kind of a double-edged sword here for that request. I just wanted to bring that up, so.
Thank you for keeping attention to the host fund. I appreciate that.
You know, the, the more that we, we currently have somebody interested in renting additional space upstairs, and there's no reason why we can't use that money to maintain the building. It just makes sense, and Mark wanted me to go that direction, and that's where I'm headed. And over time, I think we can get off of the fund and maybe out of the host, because that's where we always pulled it. I know that's a consideration, so. The, the stormwater, I, I want to point out one thing really quick. I came to Jenny late today, and I said, there's, there's an error on here, or I didn't tell her correctly. I'm not sure which, but I will take the blame for that. I'll say that I, this is on me. What we did is we carried a line item across, and if you look at the contracted projects, that line item was $111,000. In years past, it was 70,000 in contracted projects and 40,000 in projects. So instead of having two accounts, I wanted to put it in one, and it was supposed to be reduced to 90,000 because some of these other requests, and I'm basically moving money around, I'm lowering, lowering that line item to offset some other costs. I'm just moving money around just real quick and simple. And you can see what I gave you. If you can read what I wrote down, you'll see where I've increased and where I decreased, and you'll see the dollar amount below it. So there's really not too many changes. The, the one thing that I will tell you, there's professional services. That shows a $60,000 currently, because if you remember, last year I requested money to do some mapping. And at this point in the year, I don't know if I'm going to be able to do that because we are way over budget because of several sinkholes, and every time it rains, we get new ones. So we may not be able to use that for that, and any number, any amount of money goes, that'll go back into stormwater, and I'll do a new request for next year. But we do have a new stormwater permit coming through I D M. It's a brand-new permit. This has been going on for two years. It's, it's been a long time coming. We will have to hire a professional to get us in tune with that new permit. So that's why I'm requesting 50. That is a one-time fee for 2022, and then it'll go back down to what it was previously in 2018. So just to clear that up, you're going to see some numbers that jump out at you, but I think our total revenue is 474, and I know I've got that here, and we're over that budget in our expenditure in 2022, but it will not be that way in the future. Because those are additional requests that are going to be kind of one-time fees. So that explains that. The other thing that I wanted to explain is every year I come and I have great plans to do a brand-new project, and every year I can't do it because we have things falling apart in town. So from 2022 moving forward, I will no longer have money in contracted projects. So if I want to do a project, I'm going to come to you the year prior, and I'm going to request that money, and it's going to be designated to do that project. Because we just don't seem to do projects like I want to do, want to, because we have so many failures, and we spend that entire budget. So I wanted to clean that up, just to explain, that's why we're going to a zero budget in contracted projects. Okay? So everything's going to come out of projects, it's going to be maintenance. And then when I do a project, I'll have, have it designed and set up, so we'll know that dollar amount the previous year. I'll request that money the following year. Clear as mud, I hope. So that's really the only things that I have that are changed. It's basically some training. We have a new guy that's going to get certifications. I haven't done any continuing education, you know, units for two years because of COVID. I, I have a lot of certifications, so I like to keep them up to date, and that's why you see those changes. And then office equipment, that's really it. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Thanks for coming in and fixing the air conditioner.
I hope everybody's cool.
Good to see you do your job.
Good evening. As far as the wastewater budget, we're looking pretty decent. We have five line items that we're looking to increase the budget by, and most of those are 6185, which is the chemical budget. We're trying to go to 45,000 on that. That is a chemical that we use to either do our sludge production or take the phosphorus down. These chemical prices and deliveries and all that are, you know, they're increasing by 30 to 40 to 50 percent. So that's really not something we have control over. The sludge production also, in the summertime, we do a little less sludge production, and in the winter it goes up just because of the settling. So I think that, and we've always been behind here the last few years on that, so I'm asking that to go to 60,000. Utility purchase, we're at 130 now, and we've, you know, that's paid out of Jenny's office, not something we have control, so I'm asking to go to 150 on that. Again, that's nothing that we control as far as down there. Two that we do have, you know, control over is the material and supply for the lift station and the collection system. But again, those prices are dictated by what the market is, and right now with PVC, we've ordered some fittings that, when we got them in, we seen the prices, and they're like 300 and 400 percent higher than what they have been in the past. In fact, we sent some back. We're like, nope, we're not putting them on the shelf. We do have to have some of this stuff on hand just for emergencies, as repairs and things happen like that. If you total those up, I'm asking for an increase to $65,000 over the whole budget, which is about a 3% increase overall. That's what stormwater's asking for at this time, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. Wastewater, not stormwater.
What's pilot to town?
I believe that is in lieu of taxes, instead of the wastewater paying taxes, they just pay a certain dollar amount to the town.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's payment in lieu of taxes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. President, can I have a point of personal privilege, please? Personal privilege for a minute? I'd like to thank interim superintendent Kirk Patrick. He stepped in in a difficult job, and he followed an extremely, extremely difficult supervisor. Jerry Crisp was just an incredible supervisor. And Tony, I just want to thank you for stepping up. I know we're getting ready to transition these positions, but you've done an outstanding job, and I wanted to make sure that the council knew how much I appreciated everything you've done in, in stepping up on this. So thank you.
Just for giving me the opportunity to step in there and try to grow the town, and we got a lot of growing to do, and it's been a privilege to do that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we're lucky to have you. Okay, Matt.
I knew the utilities would get us caught up on our agenda.
I want to try, good evening, y'all. The first thing I want to address is my printing and advertising. From my understanding, I think a lot of their departments have had to increase their, their amount that they need to, to do their, you know, have printing and advertising done. The biggest hit I see is when I do my annual consumer conference reports. It's like 3,500 mailings. I know I upped my game a little bit, the ones I had sent out this spring, they used to be just black and white. I did have them made in color this year. And due to obviously more houses coming in, I need to increase that $2,000 from 3,000 to 5,000. I think that'll be sufficient to cover for quite a few more years ahead. The second thing is the new equipment fund. I, I raised it substantially last year to cover the purchase of the new service truck. Mr. Winters asked me about if it was going to be maintained at that amount, and I said that I, I didn't think it needed to be. So I decided to go ahead and decrease it by 50,000. And I'd like to add that this, this particular line item just isn't for vehicles or excavation equipment. It could also be used for if I have a generator engine lay down, a well motor gets hit by lightning, high-service motors, anything to do with the plant, because it's all mechanical. It's all equipment. But I still think by lowering that down to, down to 100,000, I think we'll still be fine to operate, even if we had something happen. So the last but not least, I'm really looking, looking forward to possibly hiring another employee next year. Some of you may not know, we operate off of I superintendent and three laborers slash operators. We operate on 24, 24/7 schedule, on-call basis. The department hasn't seen an increase in manpower in almost 22 years. We've just had three guys in the field. I strongly feel like with the growth and additional infrastructure, this is definitely a topic of interest, not only for myself, but the men that currently, currently work at the department. After speaking to the clerk treasurer, there are adequate funds to possibly move forward with this, and the job takes many years to learn. That comes up, I believe, projected as $68,000 to fulfill that position. As of now, I have no further things to ask.
Are any of your employees close to retirement age?
No. My, my oldest is probably eight to 10 years out. He's just going to work until he can't go anymore, I guess. That's what he said. Whatever he wants to do. He shows up the young guys. That's all I have, but that ends up being $48,000 I'm cutting out of the budget due from last year to this year. And I can still fulfill that position, and that's something I'd like to look at, obviously the first of the year. Hiring somebody at the water department's different. You, you've really got to be picky, because we can't afford to have somebody that are six months or just a year. I really want to look strong and really take my time and find the, the exact person that I think needs to be employed with the town, Danville, and the water department. And if I did never, if I don't find it, I may not even feel it, but I may just keep waiting until I do find what I'm looking for, you know, you know, employee. At this time, that's all I have.
I think Matt wins, right? Does Matt win?
And I can't, I can't speak for Jenny, but in, in Matt's request, because the utilities are unique, as Jenny said, I'm in full support of his request for an employee. It doesn't affect the general fund in any way, shape, or form. Matt earns his own money. He takes very good care of his money. He treats it as if it's his own. And I firmly believe if Matt says he needs an employee, he probably needs an employee.
I, I agree 100%. Matt and I have met a lot this week and worked on the reports together, and I'm fully in support of him hiring someone. Matt and I have also been working, and Tony and I, with the water and wastewater ban that the council approved this year, we've restructured some of the transfers to be applied to the ban, because water and wastewater both have a bond, and now they have a ban. So Brenda and I are working with, with Matt and Tony on reconciling that. I'll also have that probably done Friday, so I'll send you out new reports. But all three utilities are financially strong. They're sustaining themselves, and we have been instrumental in being, I think, ahead of the game with utilities and our rate increases and everything that we've done. O W Cronin has been a very good partner for us and staying on top of those type of things, so.
I wasn't going to go through every line item I use. Some of them I don't use, clerk treasurer uses. It works. Like I say, I look at projections, what, what things are a cause. Like last year, chemicals went up and I had to do something, so. But it's fairly easy, and I can, I'm glad I glad I can keep it quick for all you.
Question.
Mm-hmm.
How much water fell today? Did we fill our aquifers up? It's quite a bit of water, wasn't it?
Enough. Indianapolis water hasn't ran yet today, so we must have got enough for irrigation.
That's true.
All it takes is one rainstorm, and Indianapolis water doesn't run.
Thank you.
Oh, wow.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank all of you. Thank you.
Very nice report.
Thank you.
I have one to thank, Mr. President. It was brought to our attention by Taft Law. As I prepare the agenda for the next meeting, which I'll have to you tomorrow, as we discussed, as you are thinking about the Christmas party, they are advising us, if we do choose to have it at Kickstand, the council will have to take a vote to allow on-duty police and fire. Is that accurate?
Yes. So I included Tom in an email Monday. I don't mean this bad, but I am very frustrated because two weeks ago, a committee started planning the town Christmas party. I met with the department heads two weeks ago. I did a save the date to everyone, including our vendors. Nobody expressed concern to me. No one at all expressed concern to me. And then Monday, I actually had a vendor reach out to me and say, do you know that your public safety is concerned about their on-duty officers? So at that time, Mark and I met. I contacted Todd Cadwell, who's the attorney for the State Board of Accounts, to ask him about on-duty officers. Mark and I contacted Jewel. And in order, since it is a private party and the bar and grill will be closed, anyone can be there, including on-duty officers. Of course, they cannot drink, but they can be at the establishment, but it does take the motion of the council with a second and vote to allow those officers to be there. Now, I'm not saying we can't change things to the fairgrounds, and I like Greg's suggestion of if we do change it to the fairgrounds, because honestly, I was just about today to sign an agreement with Kickstand, because I didn't know that you guys were concerned. So I almost signed an agreement today, because Mark had given me his blessing, Jewel had given me his blessing, and I haven't signed it yet, thank goodness, but I think it would help if you guys do move it to the fairgrounds. That Kickstand does cater it. I reached out to the Beehive. She's providing desserts. I mean, we had all of this in place, because I didn't have any idea that anybody was concerned about the establishment. So, but Mark is right in what he's saying. So next Wednesday night at a meeting, it will take the council, and if we have it at the fairgrounds, that eliminates all that. But I would request that you do allow Kickstand and the Beehive to cater it, because I pretty much have that already in place.
I heard that Kickstand has very good food.
They do.
They do. They really do.
Yeah, that'd be nice. I'm just worried about, all the law's okay, everything's fine, but I'm worried about four police cars in front of a bar.
I understand that. I do.
Walking out in their outfit. It doesn't matter what the law is.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying.
They'll drive by and say, what are the police? And you know how these Chinese whispers goes. It gets on that pretty soon. Our police are all drinking, and the fire department's hanging around down there. So that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, and I understand that.
And in hindsight, I mean, I got your email, and my first reaction was to pull back and go, I can't believe that we're doing that.
Yeah.
But I did not respond, you know?
Right, right.
Maybe it was, I'm just going to have to kick that around and think about that. But I just, I'll just say, it was a bit of a surprise to me.
Yeah. And I understand what you guys are saying, but you have to understand where I'm coming from. I mean, literally, the committee has probably spent four hours on this. I mean, I literally, with Mark and the committee's blessing, was to sign an agreement, you know? And so you just, I would ask that you also understand our position of where we've been. I just wish that someone internally would have reached out to me and expressed their concern, because honestly, I was, I don't want to speak for Mark, but I was thinking, well, it's always been held at the Fydell's for twenty-five years, which I understand is a private club, but it is a bar, you know? And so it never...
And for the last couple of years, it's also been at the fairgrounds, which maybe my assumption would have been that that would have continued.
Yes.
You know? And I'm not defending anybody here on the council, but I'll just say that this council for our administration has gone, I feel like, has gone above and beyond to be involved in some of that, you know, decision-making process that maybe previous councils hadn't really even wanted to be involved with.
Exactly.
So some of those things, I think that, you know, even just maybe, you know, and I appreciate you letting us know, but, you know, also maybe, you know, could ask for some input, too, before, definitely before something gets signed.
Right, right. Yeah. I haven't signed anything, so I appreciate that. I just, yeah.
I say we try to get to the fairgrounds. That's my thought.
Okay. Anything else, Mark?
At this point, our next work study is not until six-thirty Wednesday. Is there any, do you have any need, any desire to change that time? You want to change it to...
So I have a list of things. I'm sorry, and I'll go very, very quickly, but that is one of my questions of, what time do you guys want to start the work study next week, and what do you want to concentrate on? My recommendation is that we circle back to benefits next Wednesday night, and salary and wages. And my request would be that we would meet at six, if everyone's comfortable with that, and...
Anything to get your budget through?
I, and I've tried to provide you with as many Excel spreadsheets, probably too many this week, just showing you what other communities are doing, what other communities are contributing to their health savings account, what other communities are doing as far as their premiums and premium sharing with employees.
So I really enjoyed the HSA report you had sent. Is there other reports that, I mean, that looked like it was produced by AIM?
Uh-huh, it was.
Do they have other reports, measurements, that could be forwarded to us as well?
So Mark and I are meeting with them on Monday. They also will be here...
Will they be here on the first?
They will be here Wednesday night to do a presentation and to answer your questions. They actually would like to meet with any council members that would like to meet with them privately at five-thirty. Mark and I are meeting with them, and anyone else that would like to be a part of that, we're meeting at five-thirty in the town managers' conference room. Or I guess we could meet in here if everyone's going to be here, but they've asked to allow...
We'd have to...
Here, I need to know, so that I can advertise it, please.
Advertise it for five-thirty.
Five-thirty? Yes, sir. Okay.
As a work study.
And they feel like thirty minutes is allowable enough for them. And any questions, please. Will you guys email Mark and I before Monday afternoon, because we are meeting with them Monday afternoon?
I have that request from you to send an email, so.
Thank you. Thank you. It just is helpful. Tomorrow morning, I'm going to have Brenda send you guys the center township spreadsheet. She does a spreadsheet for Judy White that allocates each individual paramedic fireman for the department, what center township percentage pays for each individual employee. I think that will help you guys to see the contributions that center township makes and how that affects our overall budget, and Mark had presented center township's contract at the last meeting, so I think that will help. Each department head, I asked him this evening and prior to this evening to discuss the ten percent decrease that we did do as part of the budget processing. You'll remember that we decreased our budget last year, and towards the end of the year, we also decreased this budget in 2021. I had a meeting this afternoon where it is strongly recommended to us that we do not add back in that ten percent. Unfortunately, if you guys read the article from Purdue University that I sent, I think I sent that on Monday. My days are running together. But the forecasting for 2022 with property taxes and COVID is meek. It's expected to be decreased, if you read through that article. It's not expected to be as bad as 2009, when the crash in the market, 2011, thank you, when the crash in the market occurred. But we will see the effects. Andy talked about that a little bit with the VH and LRS. Mark has discussed that in the last work study. Property taxes are always in the rear. So the COVID and how it has impacted individual families, more importantly, how it's impacted commercial businesses, we're not going to see that until next year. So that was a really good article, whether you believe in Purdue University's philosophers or not. It still is a very good article. I met with, I spoke with some county officials, county board members, commissioners, and they agree very much in that. And it's taking longer for us to get revenue estimates because of COVID, but we're working as hard as we can to get everything out to you guys. Let's see. As soon as this budgeting process is over, the end of October, we will start concentrating on ARP, an American Rescue Plan grant. We did receive that revenue. Mark applied for that on our behalf. The revenue has come in. I've added that to your council clerk treasurer packets. You can see that. We have formed a committee, which is Mark, Will, myself, David, and Nancy, that is reviewing the applications from the department heads that they have submitted, and we partnered with Baker and Tilly to work on those with us. So we'll circle back to that towards the end of October, first of November. That came up tonight. So we will be concentrating on that. A majority of that is designated for infrastructure. I think the utilities, superintendents, and Mark and Will, we want to concentrate on over by the airport and building that area up to be able to recruit more commercial business. I and Jewel and Mark and Will are working on resolution ordinance. I can't remember which one it is. We've been working on it for a week, on the ARP revenue. I've brought this up before, and I'll say it again tonight. Some cities and towns have given bonuses to their employees who worked during the COVID time. Public Safety has requested bonuses for their employees. The whole town operated. None of us went down. The water plant, wastewater, they still had to check their facility every day. Their staff still worked a hundred percent. The only department that did not work, and this was not under Andy's regime, was Public Works. But everybody else was still staffed and working. We still had business to do. So it's really in the hands of Jewel right now with his recommendations, but I'll be coming probably in November. We'll get through this budget, concentrate on the budget, before I present that to you guys. But if you have any input, please let me know on that as well. I'll get you the link to the census numbers tomorrow, and the department heads will get you the reports. That's all I have. Thank you.
In addition to their reports, is it possible, and if you've sent this, I apologize, our overall ins and outs?
Yes.
Everybody combined?
Yes. So I am waiting to get the revenue estimates, and then I will send you the exact same reports that you guys received last year. I think everybody was very happy with those. And I will hone in more on the host reports as well. I've been working with Will and Mark and our financial advisor. We've gone back to 2018, I think, on the host to show you revenue and expenditures. And so we have lots of reports in the workings. It's just finalizing them with numbers the next several days. So yes, I will get you those, and I'll, I will add this. Greg brought this up, and this is a very good point. Our accounting software, if you look at one of my accounting software reports on the proposed budget report, it has a column that says projected year-end. And Nancy, you asked this as well, and Chris, this is a very good question. Do not pay a lick of attention to that column. I'm trying to get it, it's very hard to get customized reports with our accounting software until January. We're changing the format of that as you guys approve. But anyway, that convolutes the numbers, and it takes different columns. Do not pay attention to that. So when you're looking at the reports that I will update and send you guys this weekend, you can ignore the projected year-end column. Just concentrate on 2018 actual, 2019 actual, 2020 actual. Those numbers are factual. And concentrate on the requested budget. Once I get everybody's reports updated, and every single person, I think, has got to update their reports, then I will get you updated accounting software reports as well, so we have checks and balances in place.
Jenny, you had also emailed us a couple of weeks ago, an Excel spreadsheet that you and I had talked about under police.
Yes.
That there was an additional line item that you were going to have Brenda take out.
Yes.
Has that been taken out, and can you resend that to all of us, please?
Yes. As soon, we're waiting on one more checks and balances, but she is in the process of taking that out, and we'll get that to you. That's it. I'll make myself a note, so I don't forget, but.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. I know this is a lot of work for everybody, so thank you for everything you guys do.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Just a real quick item, sir. I'm so sorry. Lisa and I have truly enjoyed cooking the last two work studies for you, because the next one starts at five-thirty. If you'd like to get us a list in your credit card, we'll be happy to go to McDonald's for you. Okay?
I think it might be...
And the food, the food was delicious.
It has been nice, though, to have dinner.
Thank you.
I think it might be like Rob and Jim's turn, maybe?
Yeah.
We'll just move it around.
Chili.
Oh, my.
Thank you. That food was delicious.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. General consensus close up?
Motion to adjourn.